Okay, you're good to go. Whenever you want to start.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Good evening, everyone. Today is February 26, 2024. This is the GBOS regular meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I call this meeting to order at 7:01. I am Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and fire department supervisor, also in the room going left from me.
Micah Newton, Housing and Economic Development Supervisor.
Jennifer Wingard, GBOS co-chair and LUC supervisor.
Guy Way, Cemetery and Parks Supervisor.
And online.
Amanda Sasse, Public Safety and Roads and Utilities Supervisor.
Thank you, everyone. Read the land acknowledgement. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood is situated between the areas known to be Denineeth and the Uctic homeland respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples. We just did roll call. Are there any disclosures tonight?
I have one possible one. So I talked to staff about the Timberline Road improvements and whether or not there were benefits or determinants or benefits. And possibly with my lot, there are possibilities for either, actually, but it's our best guess and everyone I've talked to so far that that there's nothing that's particular about my lot that would be more, it's more benefit to other people in other locations. But if people disagree with that, we can have a conversation. But if we go through the the whole list of questions, I answer right now based on my understanding of the project.
Thank you, Jennifer. That's number 10 for the Timberline Road and not necessarily the other traffic calming, not the number 10. It is the ruling of the chair that you do not have a conflict financially or personally in the situation where your house probably is. I don't hear any objections to my ruling. I'll go to the agenda revision. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Root approved agenda.
One second.
You have a motion in a second. And are there any discussions or objections? Go by a sense, the agenda is approved. February 7, 2024, GBOS LUC joint meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve those? That was the presentation by Pomoy.
Root approved.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Go by a sense. Any objections? February 7, meeting minutes are approved. Then we had a January 30 special meeting regarding the HLB one and five year plans minutes. Entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes.
Okay. Was it because I recall it was one thing, I think we had some fusion about those minutes released. I did. But I don't know. Could we come back to that?
We can come back to that one. Then we had the regular January 22 meeting minute, GBOS regular meeting. You have a second? Thank you. Any objections to that? Okay, those meeting minutes are approved. And then lastly, we had our MOA GBOS quarterly meeting that same day on January 22 with minutes to approve. Thank you. Do we have a second?
All sorts of.
Okay, any objections to those minutes? Right, Jennifer, second, quarterly meeting minutes or 22nd quarterly meeting minutes are approved. We go back to HLB minutes now. Margaret, did you?
Well, I think what I recall that we went back and forth on at a different meeting had to do with why GBOS didn't include one of the parcels in the one in the letter. I'm not sure that I know what the other one was. And not to take you backwards, but since we're spinning on that for a moment, I think that we had discussed via email the possibility of moving the DOT or the presentation that's under new business item number 18 into a presentation. It is a business item and is listed on the agenda as a business item, but in the interest of having more people be able to see the presentation portion of it, I think we were talking about moving it earlier in the evening. So just as a reminder that I think that had been a conversation. I'm not sure what you had decided.
Thank you, Margaret.
Well, sorry, could I make a question for the January 30, 30 of minutes postponed?
There's a motion to postpone the HLB meeting. Do we have a second? Okay, Guy wasn't there, so he cannot make any motion. Is there a second calling to make? I can put motion.
I think it will be approved.
Thank you. That we have that motion again to approve. Do you have a second for the HLB? Okay, thanks, Jennifer. And okay, have a roll call vote or go by a sense? Okay, go by a sense. Thanks, everyone. Those are approved. Thank you, Margaret, for all of the meeting minutes. What is the will of the body on the suggestion to move the business item to presentation?
Do we need a motion to reopen that or can I simply move that we do move that forward in the agenda?
I think you can move the order of the day to place the business item into presentations. Five.
So after number five, basically number six under, oh, sorry, number 5.5?
Right, it can be numbers.
Okay. I assume.
It has been moved to have the presentation before public comments. Do we have any objections to that?
I just got a question. So I think this is the one that Tim presented at Andy's earlier. As we move into Old Business, we're going to pick an action today.
Well, it would be under presentations, not a business item. Is that correct?
It'll come back before you because they're going to submit a packet to planning and planning will send out for comments. It'll come back. You'll see the final submission at that point. So this will be preliminary.
It's been very clear.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, the item has been moved. I'll go into announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. And just as community is asked and expected to adhere to a code of conduct, so shall our supervisors. GBOS meetings are an opportunity for our community to gather and become informed and provide support to our service area. I ask that this environment continue to be welcoming to members of the community, public and guests both in the room and online, and we remain professional and courteous. The fourth group for training is tomorrow, Tuesday, February 27 at 6:00 PM in this community room. The program is free to attend. The registration link is in the packet. Meetings, GBOS 2023 interview is March 20 at noon. The GBOS regular meeting is March 25 at 7:00 PM. And the MOA GBOS quarterly meeting is April 29 at 3:00 PM. GBOS LUC joint meeting regarding the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan is April 29 at 7:00 PM. Okay, into number one legislative report is Senator Kathy Geisel online.
I am.
Thank you. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, a quick report on what the Senate has been up to. Today, we concurred with the House on an education bill. So we had a foundational bill called Senate Bill 140, which was for broadband for schools. We are the recipient of a grant from the federal government to increase broadband in rural Alaska up to 100 megabytes per second, I think is how it is. I'm sorry, I don't know that unit of measure, but I know you guys do. In any case, it would be a huge increase from 25 megabytes. So we had this underlying bill. We sent it to the House. We passed it unanimously here in the Senate. And the House put education funding on multiple levels into this bill. They spent last week debating it extensively and finally settled on $680 per student per year increase in the base student allocation for education. They also added $500 per student in grades K through third who have reading deficiencies. So $500 designated for that each student who had was not up to grade level in reading for special assistance. They increased the funding for correspondence schools. Correspondence schools in the past have gotten 90% of the BSA. They increased it to 100%. And they placed in the Department of Education a charter school coordinator. Originally, they had wanted the State Department of Education to take over jurisdiction of charter schools. The Senate was not pleased with that. We believe in local control. So the House agreed to just have a coordinator in the Department of Education. So they sent that bill over to us and today we concurred with that. In other words, we passed it. It has been sent now to the governor's office. Tomorrow, the governor has a press availability. I believe it's at noon. It's either at noon or 12:30. At that point, we'll find out what he's going to do with it. He has signaled to us that he intends to veto the bill. But we'll see tomorrow what actually happens. But that's education funding. That was a very long process. But it's good. Hopefully, hopefully, the governor agrees to sign that bill and we have education funded early so that schools don't have to lay off teachers because they don't know how much funding they're going to have. The second issue I've been working on is Cook Inlet gas. And I have several bills in the hopper related to gas storage and making sure that the rates are regulated so the consumers aren't having to pay a huge amount. I'm also looking at some incentives for more gas development in Cook Inlet. We have a lot of small companies in Cook Inlet that have small production on their leases. There may be a way that we can incentivize incentivize them bringing on more gas. And then lastly, of course, we always have the budget. We have gotten the governor's amended budget. He gave us the first budget, which he put together on by December 15. There's corrections, of course. He gave us that last week. With this education funding that I just described and the budget as amended by the governor, we will have and and I almost forgot the permanent fund dividend and a permanent fund dividend that is 25% as it was this last year. We will have about $50 million in surplus for this budget. That's pretty tight. That 50 million actually provides some cushion for unexpected price increases and so forth. It means probably no capital budget. So we'll see how all that shapes up. It's a little early yet. We usually don't really finalize the budget till May. But that's what the numbers are looking at, looking like so far. So I'll end with that, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight.
Thank you, Senator Geisel, and for all of your work. Are there any questions from the board or Senator? We have one question for you. Go ahead, Guy.
Yeah, thanks, Senator Geisel. I have a question about the broadband. How much federal funding did we receive for that? Well, did you say?
Oh, I didn't say, Guy, through the chair. I didn't say because I forgot how much it is and I left my notes back at the office. So I'm sorry, I can't give you that exact number. It will come out in my newsletter this Thursday, however. So if you'd like to get my newsletter, just let me know and the number will be in that. Thank you.
Yeah, I have one more question. Okay. As far as definitely gas, is there talk about the tax credits for the to increase production or new production in the inlet? Is that part of the that on the table right now?
So what's on the table right now? The governor actually put a bill on the table last week that would reduce the royalty that the producer has to pay to the state from 12 and a half percent to 5%. And that would be in place for 10 years after production began. Many companies, well, the main company in Cook Inlet, 90% of the leases in Cook Inlet are owned by Hill Corp. They also have control of the drill rig. They have massive amounts of storage in Cook Inlet. They also have the controlling interest in the Beluga gas field. So they have told us reducing royalty, it doesn't really matter to them. They don't need it. But there are other producers who would benefit from it. For example, Fury has a platform out in Cook Inlet. He's sitting over about 300 BCF of gas. But he has royalties that add up to 25%. 12.5% is the states. The governor is proposing dropping the state's portion of that to only 5% to help him have an economic project. I'm actually proposing a complete royalty holiday in Cook Inlet. In other words, 10 years of not requiring a royalty from small producers. This would be companies that are producing less than 15,000 mega MCF, pardon me, MCF per day. So these are small companies that could produce more, but that royalty kind of takes away the economics. So that's an idea. And then there's some other ideas, maybe subsidizing some companies. I'm not keen on that. We tried that before by giving cash credits. Maybe you guys remember that. We actually had to repeal those because the state couldn't afford to hand out cash. So yes, there are ideas out there to incentivize more gas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Geisel. I did see another hand up and I don't see it anymore. But Crystal, if you did have one, go ahead, please.
Well, I heard, thank you, Senator Geisel. I heard you say that there's unlikely money and for capital projects. I did submit a capsis for half a million dollars on behalf of the Girdwood Workforce Childcare Project. So in the event there are any scraps left over, we would appreciate anything being sent back in regards to that request. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. I saw your capsis request and it is on my list. So what senators do is they collaborate with their two House members. So I have Representative Laddie Shaw and Representative Craig Johnson. And so we both, all three of us looked at our capsis requests. I chose to put Girdwood's childcare on my list. And the other two agreed to that. Of course, Laddie Shaw is the representative, so he's the only one that would have cared about that. Craig Johnson wouldn't. But Girdwood Childcare is on the list for funding. And I'm hoping because it's such a small request that I can still kind of horseshoe, you know, get that in the budget. We'll see what happens though. But absolutely, I know how much that's needed.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that so much. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Senator Geisel. And we'll move on to if there's anyone from the mayor's office. And if not, the assembly reports. So if Representative Johnson or Salt is there, can't see down.
I don't think they are here.
Okay.
Nope.
Let us know if they did join. And then Margot Bellamy's report, I'm assuming he's in the packet, but I did not.
I didn't get it. I I've given people the links on how to get to them themselves in our meeting packet.
Thank you, Margaret.
As it was 100 and something pages, so.
Yes, thank you. She has a great report with the hyperlink. Then moving on to the HLBAC Girdwood Representative Report, if Tim Sharnan put it in packet order piece.
Tim did put it in the packet. It's on page one of the packet. So here's his report and they have a meeting coming up on the 22nd here. Yeah, they'd had a meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sharnan. And then we'll go on to supervisor reports. There are lists here, but let's go in the room. Mike, you could go first.
Yeah, sure. I was at the, I was with Jennifer, the HLBAC meeting that we were just talking about. And the with one, I think it's just one amendment. Yeah, with one amendment, the work plan is part of the BAC. The other thing I'm working with, part of a working group is AML, Anchorage Municipal League on STR regulation. We had our first meeting last week and there'll be some more over the next several months. Done a deep dive on room tax, which we'll be talking about later. There's also a long range transportation plan that came out as a draft form from the municipality. Most of the municipal work around transportation is based on the city itself or Anchorage Bowl, Eagle River. It doesn't go further south than McHugh. This is the only document. This is a document trying to put together a municipal wide transportation plan. And we've sometimes in the past struggled by this kind of difference between the municipality sort of April 3, autumn, and therefore we sometimes get dropped out. So I will provide a link to Margaret for that survey and hopefully that can be sent around. So it's in the public comment phase at the moment. The other thing I want to point out is there's a meeting on Friday, which I cannot remember the industry for, the ACE Fund. So this is the the money from the marijuana tax in Anchorage, which is being redirected to supporting childcare. And they're having a meeting here on Friday. I'll throw here on Thursday night in this room at 7:00. And it's an opportunity, you know, parents in particular, anyone interested in childcare to come on.
Thank you, Mike. Jennifer, go ahead.
Yeah, building on what Mike said, so Tim's report was kind of after the fact and might not given the credit he's due and might forget to mention at the next, by the time we roll around for next GBOS meeting, that he got in an amendment with the help of Girdwood or Ice Ski Club and particularly Dev Essex, I think also possibly the Trails, members of the Trails Committee to make sure that any disposal of 6-011, which is the section that Alyoska Resort is calling Glacier Creek. So the one amendment that got added onto the work plan was one that makes sure that the Girdwood Trails Plan and the Comprehensive Plan are done before that disposal is. So that was an interesting development at the meeting. The other thing is that there were amendments that, or rather, changed it to the work plan that were simply highlighted on the, in the work packet. And out of those many, well, in fact, most of the GBOS suggestions were accepted. So that was kind of great. Or we agree to work on it. And it sounds like one of the biggest sticking points now that we might have for consideration of transfer of parcels to is a very clear understanding of how exactly, but it's not off the table. So that was, I view that as an amendment. So anyway, many things to Dev Essex and Tim Sharnan, and I don't know if you've been on that as well. Thank you, Brian, if that was you. And then I also want to mention for land use stuff, the assembly meeting tomorrow night. I saw our esteemed, like, editor, the hearing request, but I wanted to draw people's attention. That's not. I wanted to draw people's attention to, we've got a fund transfer that will hopefully go right through on the consent agenda for the Girdwood Capital Fund. And then also there's going to be discussion of the licensing and regulation of the STR. I think that's AO 2023-110 in addition to the Trails Plan. Trails Plan, so that'll come up later, but I wanted to.
Thank you. Guy, go ahead.
I want to give that to the shout out to Trails Plan coming up in the assembly, 2024-2024, maybe later in the agenda. If you're available and you're making acreage, yeah, it'll be, they'll vote on it and public comment. Good.
Thank you, Guy. I'll briefly state that I reached out to DOT Sean Holland and he's not able to come tonight because he's in Juneau. But he just said that the erosion repair over Glacier Creek Bridge there is substantially complete. And they might come back in the spring to clean it up, but don't anticipate much work. There's not an answer yet for a trail pathway, but he's hoping to know more by next month. And also, there's a home initiative webinar on March 4. And this is an email that we received, but it's Housing Opportunities in the Municipality for Everyone Initiative. And there's going to be a follow up meeting on March 22, March 18, that Planning and Zoning Mission. So that's welcome and open to anyone who'd like to go. And the link, I tried to email to Margaret, but it's.
Send it back.
There it is. Thank you, thank you. That is all I have for update. And Amanda, if you have anything.
Um, I do not have anything more to add. We have an agenda item for the P SAC. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Yes, Mike?
Just to people who are interested in our initiative, it's basically, it's work on rezoning Anchorage Bowl. It doesn't directly affect Girdwood. It is one of these things that could accidentally affect Girdwood. Several of us, they lost touch.
Yes, you can click for the link to the webinar. Thanks, Mike. Okay, we'll go to committee updates. Three minutes each, please. Is there anyone here from Girdwood Trails Committee? Land Use Committee? And P SAC? Could you come forward just a little closer to the mic for people online? Mr. O'Malley, thank you.
My name is Tommy O'Malley, box number 598. I'm a member of the Public Safety Advisory Committee. I just want to know if if what will be covered in when the Public Safety Advisory Committee comes up under Old Business, I think it's 16?
15, yeah.
15? I don't know if if what is going to be considered as far as Public Safety Advisory Committee structure has to do with some of my concerns about the Public Safety Advisory Committee. How would I know?
Wait. Amanda, you can jump in here too. I think one of the items we will be talking about is if we retire that committee for now due to it has not been as active as it was perceived when it first began. So that'll be talked about, but there are also a consideration of two appointments to that committee. So I think those items will be discussed, especially from a staff perspective. Amanda, I don't know if you want to add anything else?
No, that's succinct.
Okay, thank you all. The next one is Cemetery, which is also under Old Business and Housing and Economic Committee. So these are updates that are maybe outside of minutes. My, or sorry, Guy?
I didn't say. Can you just give it now?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. O'Malley.
Tommy O'Malley, box 598. I would like to give a reporting of some advancement in the cemetery. We had a unanimous vote from the assembly in support of putting the a bond for cemetery capital improvement projects on the ballot. At the last minute, the administration came and supported the bond proposal. So it was, everybody was ready for it. The problem was that they vastly underfunded it because they wanted to bring the bond amount under the porta potty amount. And so we'll have to, when the bond passes, we'll have to figure out how to reapportion money. And Meg Zatell said that she would have another bond in a couple more years to add and restore some of the money. to add and restore some of the money that's needed to actually do the work. The actions that I am taking as a chairperson of the Girdwood Friends of the Cemetery Committee is to produce a flyer that's going to be sent to super voters that will be vote for this or advocating for a vote on the bond, but it'll be an informational, educational flyer. And in that way, we will have to be a public or a like a candidate. We're, I checked with the Alaska Public Officers Commission and they say if we're just educational and informational, we won't have to register and sign up for everything. I'm getting help coming up with the flyer, a postcard that'll be sent out. And I will go for grants from mortuary companies and monument companies to pay for the mailing. And I expect that to be under a thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, Tommy. If there's anything else, we can email it quickly, three minutes. And if there's not any other committee reports that are outside of minutes from those meetings, we'll move to the status of proposed, proposed Girdwood Developments, which is packets. So here's the updates. Mike, did you like to speak to anything?
Final updates.
Thank you.
So we added the resort proposals. Obviously, we know Harlem Hills is, I believe, one move forward. The RFP closed last week. We're a consultant, work with HLPS. I haven't done anything more about it. Hopefully we'll hear something in the next week. The lodge, I did follow up with the Alaska DOT. Maybe I should leave saying that they say they expect to issue a final decision in the next couple of weeks. So we'll hear an update on that. If it's a no, then I think things stop. If it's a yes, then there are plenty of things to do. And the other projects are updated then.
Thank you. Any questions on that, anyone? Okay, we'll go to service provider reports. Five minutes each, please. And fire is listed first. So Chief Weston, I saw you online.
Hi there. Hi there. Good evening. So for us in January, we had an uptick in calls. So a few more than normal, seventy-three percent were EMS. And the uptick was in fire calls, but they were related to CO. With all the snow coming off and high snow levels, there was a number of CO calls that we went on. So that's what the uptick was for that. In February so far, we've had twenty-four calls and seventy-one percent of those have been EMS. We've had some critical patients and the crews have done really well and really good EMS care for those, those people that are needing care. And currently we have a new firefighter one class that started up and they'll be all finished by July. And then additionally, Captain Jeff McDonald, who was a firefighter with me on the department in the nineties and who has been running the AFD Company Officer Class and also their new academy, he's been an instructor there. He's come down, he came down last training night and he's come down this past weekend and he's doing training for us on officer development. So we're super happy to have him sort of giving back in service to our department from years ago. So that's gone really well. And then finally, our ambulance, we're starting the ambulance switch out, which means AFD is switching out our ambulances to be refurbished. The boxes will just get, the boxes of the ambulance will get stuck on a new chassis. This is a cost-saving measure versus just buying a new ambulance. Anyway, but it involves a lot of switching around of ambulances, sending, sending old ambulances to the lower forty-eight and then coming back and all that. And so in the end, when we see the ambulances come back, they will be not diesel ambulances, they will be gas ambulances. And then we will look to see where the project is that was funded through area wide to get a gas fuel supply at the fire station. And that's it for me. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Weston? Thank you for your report.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Chief Ashay.
Good evening. The stats for Girdwood for the month of January of this year, we had total two hundred thirteen calls for service. A majority of those calls have been officers generated, security checks and area checks and business checks. We had roughly twenty-nine traffic stops and traffic type calls, including DUI enforcement, parking. And then the other ones, the other one, the one up slightly was just sort of the conduct assault type calls. We had roughly twelve for the month. So starting off the year, we had two, total of two hundred thirteen calls. The only other major, not major, but other, only other information reported is one of our officers has tended his resignation. Ruben Garcia will be going back down to Texas. He's been with us just shy of three years. He enjoyed his stay with us in Alaska here, but being from Texas, it was a hard time for him to adjust to winter time months. So he, he has gained employment back down in Texas and will continue his law enforcement experience. We wish him the very best in his all his law enforcement endeavors. Other than that, we're just tweaking our, we're pre-planning for Slush Cup and other events coming up this spring as well as this summer. We're just tweaking up our event staffing on those issues. Only other things, Woodyer Police Department last month also applied for a interoperability communications grant to replace out our current handheld radios or hand packs. The main reason why is for the last couple of years, we're currently using ALMAR Alaska Land Mobile Radio Network. That way we can communicate basically statewide if we have to through our radio systems. And our current radio systems will, is pretty much functionally obsolete. We've been advised in about two years, two to three years, ALMAR will not be supporting our older radios. So we're hopeful, we applied for radios to replace our current hand packs. The next step is once, if we do get that grant, the next step is also replacing some of our mobile radios in our vehicles. But other than that, business as usual has been, officers have been working with the snow and issues in Girdwood as well as Woodyer and the highway. But everything's been going good and flowing smoothly. We continue generally every week to have officers overnighting in Girdwood as well as in Woodyer. So if we have major calls, there will be available, including if we have issues with going between Girdwood and Woodyer due to weather conditions, snow conditions, avalanche, we generally will have an officer still stationed in Girdwood. So if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Ashay. Are there any questions on board, public? Thank you, Chief Ashay, and thank you to Officer Garcia as well for all of your service. Next is Kyle Kelly from Rec. Roads.
Sure. In the back of our packet here, we do have a report. It goes into more detail, so I'll save that there for your reading enjoyment. But, don't worry, there, there it is. But just some highlights. Want to shout out that we want to give a big thanks to the Trails Committee and the Friends of the Girdwood Trails Committee and the Nordic Club and their sponsorship of the Trails this winter. Our great volunteers have been doing a great job keeping up with the grooming out there and getting the trails back in shape, especially after these warm-ups. We do ask and advise people to be more aware during warm-up sessions that maybe not walk the trails, especially the more groomed trails, because you post hole pretty quickly. And so those are really hard to repair. And then as well, we want to give a happy report that we're seeing quite a bit of the trash cans being full of dog poop. And we celebrate that as that's getting off the trails and into the proper location to dispose of. So thank you to everybody who's doing their part there. As always, Margaret and I keep up with that during the winter. And we're actually in the process of right now hiring our summer staff and it looks like we might have a hundred percent return this year in our summer staff. So we're excited to have our staff back from last summer to work for us. So we're in the process of going through that right now. The Trails Plan, as mentioned, is tomorrow night. It will be on the agenda towards the end of the Assembly Agenda tomorrow night. And so myself and Holly from Huddle will be there to present the plan to the Assembly. But we welcome anybody who would like to give input to the Assembly about it tomorrow night. So and if you want to, you can watch YouTube to see when it's getting closer. It's live on YouTube. So you don't have to be there through everything else if you want to come in when it gets close to that, in that aspect. We are working away on summer and spring plans, getting ready. We received quite a bit of money last year through fundraising, so we're working on plans to replace the two dugouts at the baseball field before the Little League season starts out there. So we're working with the Little League organization to make that happen. And as well, we're getting ready for the Throwdown Showdown, which is a great fundraiser for the skate park. And this year it will definitely be very helpful in fundraising. We just purchased new skate light material, which is the top surface material for the skate, for the skate park. And that order alone, with the increase in prices last couple of years for twenty-five sheets, was close to five thousand dollars. So it's an expensive endeavor, but the fundraising and the support that we get for the skate park makes it easily happen. And we plan to do quite a few improvements out there this year. So welcome anybody to come out, Throwdown Showdown, that wants to enter. There's two days of it. As always, we're working through our grants. We did submit a land, water and conservation fund and we did hear that we were approved by the committee that reviewed it. And now that's often the National Park Service for their consideration, as they're the ones who actually fund that and turn that money over to the state. So they will hope that they will approve that for the Lions Club Pavilion, Lions Club Park Pavilion. And then the RTP grant, we also heard that we were awarded that and for the Middle Ditterod Trail Improvement. So we are waiting to hear final approval from the Director of the Parks, for State Parks, and hopefully get them with those along. And then we have submitted a Rasmussen Foundation Grant, Tier Two Grant for assistance with the construction of the suspension bridge. And so I haven't heard anything back on that, but that has all been turned in as of last week. So we'll be looking for something to come along those lines. So and then we're looking at other park, park foundation grant, community foundation grant. So we're working all those through. So hopefully we'll get some of those. As always, Margaret does a great job of keeping the social media and website up to date in that area. Switching gears over to roads, still in winter conditions, actually pretty nice out there right now. And the crews are doing a great job keeping up with it. Last week's heavy rainstorm exposed some drainage issues that were mostly addressed. We have one area we're waiting on a part for our steam truck to get fixed. But for the most part, the crews responded. We did have some flooding down on Lake Tahoe due to the fact of a private snow storage that was put in and blocked the culvert. It was keeping up until the rain really took off in the afternoon and then backed up. But the crews responded. We were out there till about ten o'clock at night and cut that all open and running again. So I appreciate Western and their response. They had actually been up since four AM that day peeling ice and continued on until we got it done. So appreciate their endurance. And we are working through major projects right now. We have submitted a grant to the EPA for the funding for the Ruane Fish Culvert Project. That's one point six million. They were, that is a congressional designated funding from Senator Murkowski. So the EPA is the holder and they basically process the money for us. So we'll be working through that over the coming months. And then as well, we are in the final plan review for the new Fish Culvert at Davos Road. And we should be getting those comments back probably by today. I think it was the deadline. And then we hope to have that construction dock completely done and then we can put out the bid this spring with possible construction this summer. That is the goal for us on Davos. So that would mean that we got Lake Tahoe done and then we can get on the Davos and then our last one would be Mount Hood after that. As for expenses, we did finally finish up the expenses for twenty-three for roads. And we came in at just over seven hundred and one thousand dollars. So our budget was seven hundred thousand, but to the height of snow there in November, December, we went a thousand dollars over budget for that. So that turned out pretty good there. And we're right on pace for where we are for January with a fifty-one thousand dollar bill for snow removal and sanding and ice peeling in January there. So overall, we are right where we need to be for, for those budgets. And we'll do a budget review with the board at the end of March, when we have closed out all the books. There's still a few things lingering, but we'll be, be able to present you with a pretty good snapshot of twenty-three for all the different departments in that aspect. As all, we're in the new calendar year, so the budgets are really young, so there's not much been spent yet. But as we move forward, we'll keep pace of it here through these reports to you in that aspect. But and then one other thing I wanted to recognize is anniversary. It is, and the mayor recognized it as well, is Margaret Tyler's tenth year anniversary with the municipality serving the Eric Gruedt Service Area. So we'd like to present her with a certificate for, for this. I gotta put this on camera so people at home can see it. Ten years. So thank you, Margaret, for all your hard work for the conference. And that's all. So if there are any questions you have.
I wish you all ten more years.
You can tell. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Kyle? For the report on it too. Go ahead.
My experience has been very good with weird weather. Thank you very much, you and the crew.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, it's been a lot of sanding.
Thank you, Kyle. I would add that the peeling was hugely beneficial.
Yes.
Yes. Great. Thank you, Margaret, for, you're so fabulous. Lucky to have you. Okay, now we'll go to our presentation, Mr. Glassit. And I'll read the item, well, actually it's presentation for the conditionally used permit. And please go ahead, hopefully fifteen minutes.
Yes. Do you need to get on? Do you want to share?
Yeah, if I can share, that'd be great.
I'm gonna stop and hear all yours.
Great.
Hopeful of you.
Thanks. I think. Okay.
Don't have to push.
Is that working?
We will sort of pop up here. You should get a red bar around what you're presenting.
Excellent.
There you are.
Okay, my name's Tim Glasson. I'm the Alaska Department of Transportation Avalanche and Artillery Program Manager. I've presented this to about three different community groups, two in Girdwood and one in Anchorage recently. So I apologize for anyone that has heard this three times and make this a fourth. What we're working on is in the Girdwood Valley, a heliport and explosive storage magazine. And I'll go over kind of a history and make it relatively quick here. So one of the main duties of the Alaska Department of Transportation is to develop and implement an avalanche control plan to protect persons who use public highways. And that's written in statute. Recently, we completed a statewide avalanche and hazard index and mitigation options assessment report. And what this really does is look at all the DOT and PF infrastructure, public highways, and determine how they rank and what we can do when the main tool we have for mitigation artillery is no longer available. So one of the main current challenges we have is the M-101 A1 105 millimeter howitzer is our primary tool on three of our high-risk highways across the state. Our lease agreement with the United States Army states that when commercially viable products are available, we need to adopt those. Additionally, these systems are going to be over a hundred years old. Part lack of support from the United States Army is becoming an issue. We're having to send folks from Fort Carson in Colorado to Alaska each year. And that's costing quite a bit of money for the state. Crews to actually use these tools takes quite a Crews to actually use these tools takes quite a bit to get them trained up to Army standards. And we're losing these folks, just like every other industry in the state and the nation, where folks are just moving on, finding better jobs. Lastly, each artillery round is going to increase in cost after we burn through the set aside amount of ammunition that the armies put for us. So the cost right now is about $100 a bullet, and that's going to go up to 500 a bullet here in, when we exhaust the supply, which could be in our next order cycle, depending. The avalanche hazard index, which is kind of the international standard for how we risk avalanches impacts to moving and waiting vehicles on highways. It's just a numerical expression, a bit of math in there, but it just gives us the number to rank the risk across the state. Two matrices here. The first one is what you do with that number and based off of mitigation measures. And second matrix there is how these public highways and roadways in Alaska shake out. You can see the top three there, Seward Highway. It's broken into different sections, but the highest frequency and highest risk is Girdwood North. And that's the biggest driver in the HI avalanche hazard index is traffic volumes. And the highest traffic volume is between Anchorage and Girdwood for all these roadways. And also to note, these, there we go, laser pen, all right. These first three all have artillery. We had another artillery, artillery highway here, Thane Road. Due to staffing and crew turnover, we had to pull the weapon from that area because they couldn't maintain standards. So these first three highways with, again, the highest risk will be moving away from artillery. And what we've seen at Thane Road is that's an increase in preventative closures. And so I think, at least on the Seward Highway, that type of measure is not going to be tolerated as much it is on Thane Road with average daily traffic on Thane Road of around 200 vehicles and it's primarily residential. Seward Highway is a little bit different. So that brings me to kind of the two big pictures for how avalanche programs manager, manage risk for public infrastructure. And that's one of those measures, measures is long-term. And that is road relocations, structures put in, run out to retard the avalanche impact and flow. And this top picture here is Girdwood Flats, about milepost 98 on the Seward Highway, pre-2000. And the highway getting pushed out into the arm, railroad tracks moved and the bike path put there. And that bike path is a catchment dam. It's got about 20 to 30 feet in elevation from the flats there. And as you can see here, they reduced the return period to the highway from five years and now it's around 10 years. So it is increasing the safety for traveling public. The other measure, measure we have in place is short-term measure. So that's active mitigation. And for, in this case, it's, you know, 105 artillery. This is south of Girdwood, the Peterson Avalanche Path. And we've since put in, within the last four years, we put in a Howitzer gun mount there to mitigate that on a regular basis, as opposed to, you know, once every five to 10 years. So big avalanches do come down. And this particular avalanche, in the last really big cycle locally here, was in 2000 and trapped multiple vehicles along the Seward Highway. And some folks were trapped in this, just south of this path. So current program, you know, we're, we're doing preventative closures when we can across the state. Locally in south central Alaska, we've done quite a few preventative closures before avalanches hit the road at Hatcher Pass. You know, we use different methods, artillery, delivery of explosives via helicopter. And in Juneau and the Seward Highway, we have a daisy belt, which is a device that's hung under helicopters and uses gases and detonates above the snow. This matrix here I wanted to present because it kind of ranks all these different measures in reliability and closure timing. And I like to highlight artillery because it comes out as E. It's not, it's the worst in reliability, simply because at any time, the US Army can tell us that we can't use these things anymore. And they can pull them at our expense. So that brings me to kind of the build out here. These are the commercially available systems, and they're commonly called remote avalanche control systems. You can think of it as devices in the starting zones, starting zones, the top of the mountains where avalanches release, depending on the avalanche path. And it's using either explosives that are dropped or thrown from a mast or a gas mixture that is detonated in a hollow tube. And that overpressure from that detonation is focused onto the snow slope. And this is what we're looking to implement both north and south of Girdwood and elsewhere across the state. Some of the things we're working on is, if you're familiar with DOT and how they get funding, federal funding, and how that's allocated through the STIP, Statewide Transportation Improvement Plan. I'm looking to get funding through there, some other federal funding. And we're working on some different innovations. So that brings me to today's presentation, which is a heliport and explosive storage in the Girdwood Valley to house larger quantities of explosive for those remote avalanche control systems. And the heliport is integral to that so that we can fly these systems from this location up to the mountain tops without flying over homes, permanent residences, established trails, and increases the safety factor there. Now, this particular site is DOT owned based off of DNR land. And DOT has it as a interagency long-term management transfer. It's surrounded by HLBM land. The railroad tracks are right there, the highway is right here, so multiple different right of ways. And this is what we are planning to build it out. So this is just a quick graphic of our plans. Multiple Type II portable magazines to hold different type of, types of explosives. The eventual build out of a remote avalanche control shop building, that's going to be pretty simple. There's no power, there's no electric, there's no utilities going to the site. And so this is just going to be a, a dry area to build these rack systems and then have them flown from this heliport up to the mountains. Right now, I've got FAA approval for a heliport in this location. And we requested 30 flights total throughout the year. And we're estimating it's probably going to take, you know, 20 to 25, so we have a couple spare. So what, also what we're doing, as you already saw, initially I worked with the Muni Planning Department for two conditional use permits. They since last month told me I can't do that and I have to go to a full rezone of this plot of land within the municipality. I have to rezone it to a GA Girdwood Airport so that I can get this heliport here. Once that's rezoned, then I can apply for a special use or conditional use permit for the explosive storage. And that's under Government Services. So I'm going to every community meeting I can to talk about this so that it's a known fact and that we're trying to build out. This is an interagency initiative. The Alaska Railroad has really jumped on this. DOT has jumped on this. We're, we're really the, the two agencies that do most or all of the mitigation along the Seward Highway and in Portage Valley Road. The Alaska Railroad is a little bit, they need this a little bit sooner than DOT does. They already have funding for remote avalanche control systems from Girdwood South. And we're looking to start this, at least reestablishing this access road and putting in a railroad crossing and grading the, the site location for explosive storage and the heliport. Hopefully this, this summer after we go through a rezone. This does not preclude a secondary access to the upper Girdwood Valley. All of our table of distance for explosive storage is based off of the railroad tracks. And the railroad tracks, according to ATFNE, is kind of the, the highest risk infrastructure close to where we're storing explosives. And that is considered like a public roadway, public roadway that has 3,000 vehicles a day. There was another Land Use Committee question about pulling material out of this location. And at this point, that's unlikely to happen due to the railroad right of way, access over the railroad tracks. If that was the case, someone would have to rezone this like I'm trying to do for natural resource extraction. With that, I'm pretty close to the end there, but you can look up my information online. There's a phone number there. I'm mostly based out of Girdwood. If there's any further questions on this.
Thank you, Mr. Glassit, for your presentation. It's getting better at every time. If anyone has any questions through the chair, please ask. And all I would like to ask is, I know this was presentation, but you just said this summer for rezone, so what's next? And what would you like from ALIUS?
Thank you for that question.
Well, I guess the thing is no action until the packet comes in.
Okay.
So at that point in time, it'd be good to know, actually, you guys are seeking, if you're seeking a resolution of support or a letter of non-objection.
Thank you. And so likely, when I go through the planning with the municipality, I submit applications. I'll likely come back to each group and ask for either no objection or resolution of support. This endeavor.
Thank you. Any questions?
Random question, is that heliport, the hotel get zoned as a GA area, as a, as an airport area as well?
I also wondered that at the last presentation. Do you know the answer, Mr. Glassit?
I'm pretty sure it did, or is, based off of what they told me and what I asked them.
It just wasn't presented that way when we looked at that base, base two upgrade at the hotel. They didn't present that as being, and it's not listed on the zoning area because I just actually looked it up as being that. So that's fascinating.
Well, I have a meeting with the municipal planning in two days, so I will ask that. I will reconfirm, yes.
Any other question?
I have two questions for Tim, if I may. First of all, once this facility is in place, are you going to, will private, private business be able to participate with, at that facility? So if ALIUSCA was to get its act together, would they be able? If, would they be able to use the facility to maintain theirs, would it be available?
I had a meeting with the mountain manager of ALIUSCA two months ago about this, when we were first started pursuing it and offered this location for their eventual build out of racks because they will also be moving away from artillery in the future. There are some nuances to that. A private company using state land, state infrastructure, and that's something that we'd have to work out if that comes to pass with ALIUSCA.
But there's a vehicle to, to make it, to, to, for that collaboration.
I think so.
And then the second question is, is why, why a limit of like 25 flights? Is that going to be a hard ceiling for flight numbers in a, in a year? What you're saying is, is you wouldn't be using that facility at all for any helicopter-based avalanche mitigation? If you're using explosives, it's a change, you don't let it there.
We may. It's primarily for loading, storing, transporting remote avalanche control systems. However, with the storage of explosives there, that can be used for other things, for delivering explosives via helicopter, helicopter bombing, we'd probably use that location also. However, you know, it's, it's, I just want to make clear that, you know, we're, 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 I'm trying to rezone it to GA so I can get a heliport there. But I'm only requesting 30 flights a year. And you know, the Girdwood Airport likely has 30 flights a day. We're not, we can't put a landing strip there. It's truly rezoned so I can get that heliport because it really is a, a safety function. Not flying loaded explosives in a remote avalanche control system over highways that we'd have to shut down. For Girdwood North, all the remote avalanche control systems that are going, going to go in place, what we're going to do is put them on a truck, transport them like explosives. I mean, for instance, today I haul the explosives on the highway, placard them, do everything else I need to do. We'd close a pullout on the north side of the highway and be able to fly from that location. So, but this location is great for everything south of Girdwood and ALIUSCA Resort if they wanted to come into this location and if we work through that.
Thank you. We have a question online and, well, Kyle.
Just wondering, when the rack system is full, how many avalanches do you think it could mitigate these cycles, I guess?
Depends on the rack. Though the rack systems we're looking at can hold 12 shots. Each shot is 12 pounds and that's detonated above the snow surface, which is highly effective compared to an artillery round, which detonates within the snow and is only five pounds. The cost for each one of these racks fully built out in Alaska is about $250,000 each. So it's going to take years to build these out and wean ourselves off of artillery. This is, this is the, this is the foundation for that. And one other thing I can note, if possible, artillery missions on the highway, it takes time. How many people have been stuck in artillery mission, mitigation closure? You know, it takes 45 minutes to an hour. And the big issue is sweeping the road, making sure no one is downrange, no one is in between our closures. That takes, you know, anywhere from 10 to 15 to 20 minutes if someone is in there and we need to request that they move on out. So that's almost a third of the time. And then it takes about three minutes per bullet to get out of, you know, between pulling the trigger and setting up the, the new shot, three minutes per bullet. If we're shooting 12 to 24 bullets, you can start doing the math, that adds up to a lot of time that people are stopped on the highway. With a remote avalanche control system in place, we're still going to have that closure time, the 10 minutes to 15 minutes to close the highway, make sure no one's downrange. And then all we have to do is open up our smartphone, pressing the couple codes to get through the security, press one button, and then every single rack system could detonate at once. And so we're eliminating, we're, we're decreasing traffic being stopped on the highway. And so it, it's just going to be a, a huge benefit to us.
One question online, go ahead, Crystal.
I believe DOT owns the Girdwood Airport. So I'm kind of curious, like, why is this facility and storing not happening on, on the DOT airport area?
The amount of explosives that we're storing would, would not meet the table of distance at the Girdwood Airport. Additionally, sling loading, loaded explosive racks over areas, it's just inefficient there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation as well. Okay, we, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to public comments. Good. Okay, person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not on the agenda. Is there anyone ready to take public comment? Mike, I have one person in the audience.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Linda. And I'm Mankoff at the Girdwood Health Clinic. And I'm just following up with you guys and reporting the numbers at the point in time. The night in question was the 29th of January, although the event took place four days after that. But when we were doing our count, and this point in time, for, for everyone's information, is, is the number of homeless people. And it is the nationwide count that is taken at the same time throughout the nation. And the numbers reported to HUD, Housing, Urban and Development. For reporting purposes are for hopefully funding to see what kind of resources could be made available to areas with significant increases. So those numbers, we went out and we physically go out and talk to people about, you know, their circumstances. They mind us taking their names. And sometimes people give us their correct names. We wanted to know how many people were in their family, et cetera. So the night in question was the 29th of January. So part of that survey was where did you sleep on the 29th of January? And we had 47 people in Girdwood who reported to be homeless. These are people who lived in a tent, trees, cars, trucks, trailers, campers. There were several people who wished not to be a part of the survey. In fact, were quite adamant about it. That number compared to last year, last year was 22. So this is more than doubled. And we did ask the question of, people wanted to share why they were in this situation. And of course, the number one question is affordable housing. We had people who were working in the service industry. They were young professionals who were homeless. A lot of pets, children, married couples. And the ages ranged from 60. So it was quite a range. And we had people who said that if they were to have housing in Girdwood, it would cost as much as 50% of their income. And this was from young professionals, I mean, not from service industry people. Number one question that they ask when they are interviewing for jobs is what can you do for housing? So these folks will most likely move on because most employers are not able to provide housing in Girdwood. So yeah, 47 was the number.
Thank you very much. Mankoff question. And if you have a public comment, we don't take questions, but you're welcome to.
I do have a question.
May, is it fair?
Thanks. Oh, sorry. So I did, I have one question. I know there's, there's fairly strict criteria if you're allowed to count. So if you were, if you were to use a max criteria that maybe meets what most of us would think should be people who are homeless. Would the number be, how much larger would that number be?
I would say probably an additional 20 to 25 people that I personally encountered.
Right. So 47 officially, but the number could be as high as seven.
May, thank you.
Did you, did you say that, so that 47 doesn't include everybody, but there were some who specifically asked not to be counted?
Yeah. And if I could just say one more thing, a lot of people that I approached, especially in the area that we all know, the parking lot. They were really fearful that they've been talking to me because they thought that I was going to report them to you guys. I think you were a victim from their parking area. And I said, come on, you guys know me. I don't tell. Besides, you guys know they're here. But they were really concerned about that. So.
Thank you. Any other public comment for tonight? Okay, time to move.
I do have one quick comment. This is with my Imagine Girdwood hat on. The comprehensive plan draft, so the draft, the community draft, the full plan should be released on Wednesday. We have a, we have a regular meeting on Wednesday. We're expecting the release of that document. Then it would be published on the website shortly after the meeting. There will be public comment until the end of March, last day of March. And the plan will be presented at both HLC and GBOS next month.
Okay.
ImagineGirdwood.org.
Imagine Girdwood. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move into old business. Number six, update of GBOS rules and procedures. All the points there, review of current committees at GBOS. And I don't know if supervisors had time since we've had this on the agenda to review. Or if anyone would like to discuss this another time. Mike, would you be ready to start?
I'll just start with one comment. And I think when we talked about this last time, we suggested it might be a good idea to wait until after the, the meeting with Mark, which is tomorrow. So I'm wondering if it makes sense to just push it to the next month.
I will contribute that I took a look at the rules and procedures and have a number of things that I think could use some provision. And I think after tomorrow's meeting is a very appropriate time. And then quickly in close to the general election, because at the bottom of Article 14, the amendments need 28 days to be open to amend the rules and procedures. Any other comments from the board or a motion?
Do, do formally, I'll move to right up until then.
Yeah, we have a motion to postpone until next month. Do we have a second? Both of you? Thank you, Jennifer. Any further discussion? Any objections? Okay, this item will be at March business. Number seven, Girdwood Fire Department requests for capital expenses in 2024. Fire personnel, protective equipment, fire hose and mattress replacement. To not exceed 21,000 from Fire Department 401 six account 2024. Chief Weston, are you ready to close this?
Sure. This is our estimated capital expenses for the whole year versus coming in multiple times and asking for different things. We will be, we will be replacing some hose when we do our hose testing. Those usually run about 250 to 285, a 50-foot section. And, and then we might be needing to replace some large diameter hose, which has a different, that's the five-inch rubber hose. And then additionally, we have a number of helmets that are expiring this year for NFPA, so we'll be replacing some of those. And that is the major things and miscellaneous PPE if something gets damaged. So that's sort of the amount, and I'd like to keep it under that one number versus coming back, recognizing the, the current budget left or the current amount left in the 406 account.
Hey, thank you. I don't see this as a written item in the packet, but normally we transfer from 406 to just need a motion.
Just need a motion approval for this. So, and currently the account balance in the 406 for fire is 170,000. But we do have a contribution coming in, which would increase it almost another 80,000. So there's adequate funding in there to, to take care of this.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Mike?
Just a motion.
I just carried that 18K is that for other service work going down?
I think you said point of clarification that he said 80.
80, yeah.
That's the contribution that comes out of the annual budget that is set each year to go to capital. Yep.
Sorry, I was going to make a motion to approve not to exceed $21,000 from the 406 account or capital expenditure.
We have a motion on the floor that was stated. Great. Would there be a second? Thank you, guys. Any questions or discussion?
One quick question, clarification. Is that the amount in the 406 account, that doesn't account for the, our plan for the apparatus, does it? Is that after the?
No, it's after. We were close to almost 500,000 and we pulled out the money for it. So that has already been paid and we do have a loan currently that's helping to fund that. But we aren't paying back on that loan until those apparatuses, those new, that new engine is completed.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Kyle, could you please do a roll call vote?
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Etchington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wurdengard?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Chief Weston.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Number eight, GBOS review of GBOS letter to HLB regarding the parcel 6134 proposed for RV campground. Input on HLB one and five-year plans. Not a name on this, but we'd like to speak to this.
Well, I've got, no, that's a twin. So in the, in the meeting we were discussing earlier, January 30th, this particular parcel, which is the one immediately south of where we sit now, along this side of Glacier Creek, did not come up for discussion. And we haven't quite been able to work out why it didn't come up, or at least I haven't been able to quite work out why it didn't come up for discussion. But it didn't. So we therefore didn't include it on our letter to HLB because we hadn't officially made a, performed an action on it. So the question is, what should we do now, given that, I think it's already come up for, it's already come up in the HLB work plan? And there is some, there is at least some potential changes in the future, either by us, by the assembly. Do we want to do anything? Is the question. Do we want to make a comment on this particular piece of land? And request, request a future amendment to the work plan? Or am I missing anything?
I have a question for one, if you want. Oh, go ahead. Okay, 6134, could you remind me what it says currently in the plan for that?
Go ahead.
Personally. If, if it was in the, it was in the study.
Kyle may get there before me.
Oh, I am pulling up the, I'll just the reference on the map so that people can understand what we're talking about.
While he's doing that, Jennifer, what was that?
I was going to add and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've had discussions, various of us have had discussions with the Senate members about this piece of land too. And so it's not needed to the assembly. It just kind of slipped through the lines. Well, I think, I think we did talk about it briefly, but then we didn't vote.
Well, it's the one with the, the RV parcel.
Correct.
So, yeah.
So, get into the right ones.
Crystal Samson, Crystal, in use of time, what would you like to say for this item?
I just wanted to speak about what I did in my public comment at the HLB meeting in regards to this. And kind of as a follow-up, in the Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee, we did, you know, there's a $50,000 budget for Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee. And the feasibility report for the RV park on this parcel, for this parcel, came back at 38,000. And so what I was suggesting is that we don't spend money, especially Girdwood Valley Service Area money, on a parcel that is not under the control of Girdwood Valley Service Area. So my suggestion to HLB was, please pay for the $38,000 study, which you're allowed to do per, you know, it's essential, like studies come down to like an improvement on the, on the land or needed for the land. And so we basically, I said, please, HLB, complete that as the landowner or transfer it to GVSA. And we will pay for the study to be done. So, and that passed unanimously at Housing and Economic Committee. So that's just my comment in regards to this parcel and the moving forward on the next step in developing an RV park there. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. And Mike said he found that.
Yeah, so the 6134 is not explicitly mentioned in the Heritage Landback Plan. It was mentioned in multiple public comments. And HLB's response was that HLB staff is aware of potential projects that are not supported in this Girdwood South Townsite Master Plan, therefore a potential.
Okay, now you're back.
Okay, I'm not sure where I got to. So just to repeat quickly, this particular parcel is not mentioned in the plan. I can find. However, the, some of the projects which have been proposed are not supported by the Girdwood South Townsite Master Plan. It's currently written. So the HLB plan does say there should be an update to that plan. That there should be an update to the Girdwood South Master Plan, which would then result in the development, make the changes. That's, I believe, what the document currently says. We have the opportunity to make changes through the assembly action as well.
Okay, thank you for finding that. Any comments from the board? Thoughts about this? And if, if we made a comment, maybe that same response would be what they said. That it's not agreeing with the South Townsite Master Plan.
That is very possible. But it is, I don't know if that necessarily negates the importance of saying, yes, we support this in general.
Well, listening to the GHDC meeting and so far in this brief discussion, I don't necessarily see the harm in making a statement. But it would, there, it would have to go to directly to the assembly because that's where the item would be requested.
So my recommendation would be we make a, we either perform the action now or when it comes up in discussion at the assembly, when it's scheduled for discussion. We make a, we make a formal action then, which would request an amendment to put in a comment about this.
Any thoughts after that statement? Yes.
I think maybe, Mike, the, I wonder if the easiest thing to do would be to make sure we vote on it now so that we have this ready to go or approval of it ready to go when the assembly does take up the. Let me simplify that. Oh, of course, it has a two bit. I could make a motion that we support the disposal of this property or the, the pursuit of this property. Actually, there is one other thing to talk about, sorry. And that is payment, who's paying for this? Like if, I think this has, maybe this has to be carefully worded and maybe that's, because I don't want to, as Crystal said, I don't want us paying for the feasibility study if they're holding. So another possibility is that we could have support for them doing a feasibility study of this or disposing of it.
Right.
Girdwood Valley Service Area.
Thank you, Jennifer. From the motion that was carefully worded and amended that Margaret probably helped with at that meeting, I think that's where they landed.
Right.
But we could, the board could propose something in principle tonight. And then once the assembly does publish a date to take a step, we come up with it, we decide now. Margaret has her hand up.
Well, I don't know how to order things so that all of your ifs and thens work out the right way. I'm concerned, I understood what GHDC was trying to do. But I think in the long run, the motion that they passed sends it in several different directions, but it doesn't direct anything to happen. sends it in several different directions, but it doesn't direct anything to happen. And I'm concerned that it doesn't inspire a lot of direction from that standpoint, because they say that it, the land needs to either get transferred to GBSA or that HLB should pay to do the study, but there's no incentive to necessarily do either one. So it seems to me that it would be better to choose a direction that is most favorable to GBOS or to the service area, I mean, and chase that down. And I mean, other people might have a different opinion on that, but I think that going in both directions at once is not probably going to get us as far. So.
Thank you.
So for second discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we move to ask that it be included in the work plan, that HLB fund a feasibility study for the possibility of an RV park. Just for the second discussion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second discussion.
Second for discussion. Okay, discussion.
Uh, I got a question. Ten in there, it might move quicker, but I mean, when would HLB get around to doing this study? You know, that could be five or ten years from now. I mean, I'm all for them doing the study if they're in hand, but it seems like it'd probably never happen.
Well, we're, sorry.
Well.
Kyle, I understand, but Kyle?
Well, I do think this is actually a very valuable piece of land from a recreational point, even if a campground didn't go there, we use it right now for recreation for the disc golf and I think maybe the point of the matter may be that we asked for the transfer of the land to Girdwood Parks and Rec for future management and ownership. Because you know, we're also looking at places for a dog park and things like that, and these, these areas have been identified. So, and then that way, we just sort of take HLB out of the whole scenario and then we have to do the work of changing our master plan if we do want to move forward. It doesn't stop. If we owned it, excuse me, as a service area owned it under the municipality, you could move forward with the study and then decide, yeah, this is feasible. Now it's worth going through the effort to change the master plan to make it work. So you know, it's which, which one's the chicken, which one's the egg? But in the, in the short game, this is a great recreational piece of land right now for us and we're using that that way and I think it could be for the future.
Thank you. Board? Put your hands up. Talk to you next.
Oh. Well, actually, let's hear from Crystal and then I'll, and then I'll say my.
Okay, so the board has had their turn. Crystal, your turn?
I'm sorry, sorry.
I was actually gonna say something very similar to Kyle, the, the easiest thing to do rather. Because HLB won't spend money on the study until they've got a, until they've got something they know can be supported by the master plan. So we end up with this, the master plan first, and that's a low priority and probably is five to 10 years. I think if we want to do something, should, should take the lead here. So ask for the, basically get it transferred. Or draw from HLB to GBSA.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Crystal, please.
I'll, I'll keep it short and sweet. I tend to agree with Kyle and Mike that I think the land is more valuable than $38,000 that they might spend on our behalf essentially. So I would say requesting a transfer to Girdwood Valley Service Area would be my preference in choosing between the two.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Okay, so that's what I thought. So with the approval of the second here, I would just flip the motion and say the exact opposite of what the first motion said. So now I would move that we ask to have the land transferred to the Girdwood Valley Service Area.
Okay, we have, we submitted the motion and a new motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion?
So just to clarify, this is a, this is a motion for us to just make, make a decision in direction, not necessarily. I mean, there is public comment here, but so what do we do with this information? Is it, it's a statement that we can in the future send a lateral response appropriate to, to any assembly action. Is that what you think about it?
That's, that's what I, that's what I thought we were deciding. It's that we were free and we could tell the assembly we do want this.
Okay. I also understood it that way from the body and I don't know when, when that will be sent, written, but we have made a decision so far in discussion. If there's no other discussion, we could vote or go by assent on this. Is there anything else from the board? Okay, great. We'll go by assent. Are there any objections to the motion on the floor? Okay, the motion passed, passes by assent and we'll go to number nine. GBSA twenty twenty four budget quarter one revisions. Kyle?
Yes. Well, we're not gonna have any revision requests. I think we're gonna work within, well, we have a couple of things going on. Let's first talk about the police department upgrades for the substation. We were still waiting on ACS to get back to us to get that project started. I do think if we move forward on that, that will be paid out over the, a three-year lease. So we'll see small increases each month to our existing payment to pay that back. And so we can work that in within our budget and we can also look at pulling money from the undesignated account to help pay with that as well, if we need it. So we will not request that upgrade, but I don't think those upgrades will be complete until probably close to the third quarter. So, so we probably won't have much payments within twenty-three or twenty-four for that. Road budget increase, it's a little bit misleading, but we're not asking for another 300,000 for that. We were discussing increasing the western budget from 700,000 not to exceed to a million and then using part of the capital fund for the Davos project. We've been told that we have to go out to bid for the Davos project, which I'm not thrilled about, but that's purchasing's decision. And so we will be bidding that project separately. So there'll be no change there in that aspect. And then we just got done talking about the feasibility study for the RV park. And so that it has a caveat of the land transfer before we can start that. So, so we'll put that on hold. One thing I do want to talk to you tonight and hopefully get your approval is that for the fire station, we have a, a water assessment that needs to be paid. And let me pull it up here on the screen, because there'll be, I can show it to you. So I'm gonna do it from this computer. It is, and this assessment, it actually goes back to the, the remodel and construction of the fire department. And so the assessment comes from AWU and and we have slowly played this off, but we would like to get this done so it just doesn't keep coming back in and surprising us. We owe $24,000 for the assessment and when they remodeled the fire station, fire stations actually get these large assessments when they get, because they pull some water for, for, you know, their tenders and things like that. And then we rebuilt the facility with more faucet heads and, and all these calculations. But anyways, fire departments tend to get hit the hardest. And so we have $80,000 right now in the operating budget set aside for loan payments. We won't be making loan payments this year. We were planning on using what was left over and moving that into capital. But I like to use 24,000 of that 80,000 to get this payment completed and off the books. And then that way we'll have this behind us so we can move forward. And then the remaining balance will go into capital to pay that off or, you know, for future payments on the, on the fire engine or a large capital payment, which I'm hoping we can do once the fire engine comes. We can make a larger capital payment towards it, towards the principal and then have a lower loan payment in the, in the long run that we can pay off. So I was seeking the approval of the board tonight to use this 24,000 or use that $80,000 fund to pay off this $24,000 water assessment from AWU for the fire department.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Question?
Does this require a change in the first quarter budget revision or is this a separate question?
It's, doesn't require no change. We'd just be using the current budget. But it'll be, essentially it'd be a change in the way our existing budget is. We're just not asking more money from the taxpayers.
Yeah.
We're just working within our.
So we're moving.
Yes. So when, when I do make the first quarter revision, we won't be asking for additional funds. We'll just be moving line items to say, okay, we're gonna use 24.
It is a, so it is a change in first quarter, it's just not an increase.
Yeah, and it's no, it's no additional draw up money. Or internally using.
I'll move that we, we adjust, we adjust the fire department budget to account for 24,000, approximately $24,000 payment of historical water assessment.
There's a motion. Okay, there's a motion that Mike just stated, I will not state.
It's not from capital, it's from what was allocated towards loan payments.
Correct.
And then the balance from loan payments to is a transfer of capital.
Yeah.
Okay, there's the motions, they're second. Now we can discuss.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks, Jennifer. Question or a comment from before the motion was made? Okay, I don't see any questions. Kyle, so could you please do a roll call vote?
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. I had a question, Kyle, on the first, the ACS. You expect them to get back to you by the second quarter?
Uh, yeah, they're actually working on it right now. I think it's more they're just trying to line up contractor to come do it. And so we, I did hope that they would, and then I think they would prefer to start in spring because they'll have to do a bunch of work outside to come inside, because they're gonna try to keep the building functional for everybody. So they're just pushing the work off till spring, so.
Any other questions, Guy?
Question about the, then maybe, or purchasing required going up to bid for that. Is that gonna mess up your timeline a little? Are you able to get that done?
Yeah, messed up the timeline. It changed everything we gotta do. So we're scrambling now. We did have to go through another round of comments and then when we had to go up to purchasing, we had to go through another round of comments. So it's bumped us back to an half months on it, so. But yeah. As you can tell, it's not my favorite subject.
Well, sorry, yeah.
Well, that's just right now, comment period. We don't, we don't know what's gonna happen actually when we get to purchasing. We're hearing all kinds of horror stories coming out of purchasing right now about delays. So.
Yes.
So we're, we're just hoping that there was this huge rush after the new year, when everybody got their new money for the new budget year, that things just kind of got flooded. And then they're catching up. By the time we get there with the construction project, they should be able to move along faster. We're having also the same concerns about the suspension bridge. So we're, we're trying to work through all this. And then plus you're in a election quarter. So there's just all kinds of things going on. So we're just riding the wave. Trying to stay up.
Any other questions for Kyle? Okay, moving on to.
Checking if there are any other, there's no other recommendations or suggestions for.
No, we are, we are, I feel like we're in a good spot. We don't need to make any changes.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Thanks, Kyle, for that. Number 10, GBSA Timberline Road Concept Design Update.
So I think we presented this last month to the board and, and we want to make sure to answer any questions. If you have any time to read through this or review it. And basically it gives three different concept builds for improving Timberline Road, basically from the church to Alpina and then up Vale to Loveland, where our highest concentrated traffic is and where we have the most problems with potholing and, and drainage issues in that area, particularly there at the intersection of Vale where there's so much turning traffic and people are powering and it causes it to wash out and water comes in. So we looked at different aspects about this and after the Geotech report and according to mass standards, so building standards for the municipality, a call for a, basically a eight to 10-foot dig out of the whole section, which would be extremely expensive to remove the immaterial. There's a mixture of woody material, peat material, good gravels in that area, but the peat and woody material really cause for the recommendation. And so that was the most expensive alternative. Let me see if I can get to it. This report is humongous, so please apologize as we as we go through and try to find different options. Do you have a patient number there?
If you go just one more down.
Ten?
I think you'll.
There you go.
Nine. Nine and ten.
Yeah. So, so the option would be, option three would be the most expensive, so that'd be a classic dig out, bring in a bunch of material and then compact it and put it in. Option two would be a new option where we don't have to dig out as deep and then we put back in classified fill that is treated with a concrete base. And so it really hardens that, that fill and base layer, sublayer and creates a very solid surface. This is something they're starting to do on the hillside and then they've been done this in definitely the Lower Forty and other areas. And I think it's a very appropriate thing for service areas where service areas don't really have bonding options. And you're always trying to work within a limited budget. And so this is a, this is a good alternative. We've researched this with local contractors and they, they do agree that it would probably be a good option in this case. And then the third option here, option one up here is called chip seal. And chip seal is used on the hillside and anchorage is basically where they go in, they grade out the existing layers and surfaces and then they put over gravel and then they infuse that gravel with, with oil and tar, basically the same mixture that makes asphalt. And then it seals up across the top of it. It does substantially better in dry climates. You know, where anchorage is more of a rain shadow, it tends to do well there. But here in a wet climate like we are, it could be very susceptible to breakdown because of the wetness we have in the summers. And then, you know, we have pretty rapid breakups in the spring and then just the amount of snow removal we do and we try to peel down, catching this material could easily make it not functional. So we, we'd be repairing it. So for me, chip seal is not any option for the Girdwood Service Area. We've talked about it for years and I've watched it in different areas during my time and I just don't think it's a good option. So that leaves us basically with option two and option three. And from our recommendation, and this report calls it out, option two is the recommendation that we have service area to consider for the future improvements of this section. This gives you an idea of the costs at current day levels. And as you can see, it's substantially different from option three, which would be the full dig out. You know, the big thing about the full dig out is you, once you dig all that material out, you gotta figure out what you're gonna do with it. And so, and then the other issue we have is material, where are we getting it from? Most likely it's coming from Anchorage. So we're hauling a lot of material back and forth in the highway to get that moved, whereas that's substantially less with option two. And I think it's a good test of if this would work, because we probably would have many more areas throughout the service area as time goes on that we made the need for. And it could be a cost-effective way for service area to handle that, that aspect. As to where this is on the priority list for construction, this is down the road still and we are still figuring, you know, we want to get through those fish culverts first, which are substantially you know, costly and get those done as we've had plans for those for many years. And we've been slowly saving money to get that and applying for grants, which we haven't been successful on, trying to make that happen. But I do see this as a priority within the next probably five years for the service area, maybe five to seven years in that area, especially after the traffic calming study that we had and it showed that that section of Timberline has some of the highest traffic volume in, in the areas that they studied throughout the whole municipality. Now particularly a speeding problem, even though it was maybe like two miles under the, what they consider a speeding problem. But it is very heavy and you think about that being a gravel road, there's houses very close to it. With these improvements, we would look to have traffic calming done in it. So speed bumps of somehow, some sort or whatever sort of method that we could get approved by the traffic department for this section to help with the, with the speed through this area. And then it would also create wider shoulders for more designated areas and narrower lanes that people would be traveling in on vehicles. So hopefully those two options will help to slow down this section. So, so a lot of information within this floor report. We're not seeking anything from the board tonight, but we'd like to hear your thoughts on it or any questions you may have. And we will continue to have this in front of us as we move forward. And we, especially if we speak, see funding options out there, which will hopefully be grant funds on the federal level, state level, whatever it may be going forward. So that's where we're at.
Thank you very much, Kyle. So let's maybe third court. Are there any questions from the board? And we can start with anyone, Jennifer?
Kyle, you know, if I remember correctly from my Black Guy days.
Kyle, you know, if I remember correctly from my bike guide days in Canada, Canada, uh, depends pretty heavily on chips, you know, but they're drier. I mean, the areas where I would have been were significantly drier, so I don't know anything about the wear. I just remember it being, isn't it also really messy going down? Like, I remember just miles of.
Yes, it's very, it's very, you know, it's basically a tar oil that they put down and, you know, I had her to be recommended for many years, like, why isn't Girdwood consider oiling? And I said, well, there, I know one reason, reasons, residents wouldn't support it here, but two, it's just the impact on cars is pretty thick. They use chip seal a lot in, um, frosty areas, because it's, it's really just difficult to get good asphalt and use keep pouring asphalt in. There's this story up in Toke, outside of Toke, when they dug up the surface there, and there was something like four feet of asphalt when they dug it up, because it just had sunk and they just kept putting asphalt over it. And so certain areas, they can just put this chip seal in for the summer travel season, and then it's just quick and cheap, especially where you don't have to set up an asphalt plan. You can do it with a truck, a hot truck, and just pour it out and then put the chips down. So, yeah, it, 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 it works in especially more remote, um, areas, uh, for a good alternative.
Thank you. I had a question or two, but one will tail from that one about frosties. In your opinion, do you think option two and, or three are equal in addressing frosties?
Well, option three would definitely be like your, your, probably your, your most solid option to eliminate frosties, because you're digging all the way down to the clay surface. But in order to do that, we're going down eight to ten feet. So you just really think about eight to ten feet, you know, it's like up to these lights almost. Um, and you're going at a twelve to fourteen foot section, and you're digging all the way down. And so, and then through that process, you're digging around all the buried utilities and trying to get those materials not broken, and then putting it all back in. So, so, yeah, I mean, that would be your, if you're trying to avoid any sort of frost movement, um, that'd probably be your best option there. But I'll be honest, we don't see a lot of frost movement in this section, especially in the spring when it melts. Um, you know, we get a lot of frost movement in other areas. I mean, we just fixed the section up in Spruitt last year that frosty bad, really bad. And we dug out all out of it, full of wood and stuff, and, uh, and peat, um, but we don't see movement here. We see it in other places, Davos and Donner, really bad over there, uh, those sections. But I think we have so many years of putting rap in this section and, and really hammering it and grading it and, and getting it right, we've seen it set up pretty well.
Thank you, Kyle. I have one other one following quickly, and do you think that two and three are this equal for, they said they both could be in twenty year life service life? Think.
Yeah, I think this infused concrete treated base will mimic, uh, eight foot dig out. It'll move as one, you know, instead of it being angulating by others, you know.
Mike?
Yeah, um, so in all these cases, it's a reconstruction highway or reconstruction. So does it have to beat, um, the standards that are specified in land use code, uh, ditch, a pathway, et cetera?
Well, this is considered a standard road. It's not a collector road. Um, I'll give you an example, just mentioned Spruitt, Spruitt's considered a collector road, which is very interesting because it has less. And so we went through that process over there, and those condos are built, they had to do the separated pathway. When a code, Timberline's not required to do that. Um, but it'd be in the best interest of ourselves to put in good ditching and material on the side, and we did it, and that's the specs call that out here. Uh, but we don't call for a separated bike path in this section or, or walkway. Uh, one is that we don't know where we would put the snow, um, if we had that. We'd rather have larger shoulders that we can still store the snow on, and then still have adequate walkways on, on the shoulders too there, um, but to build out something that's separated. And we, we experienced that on Verbier, and, uh, fortunately, there's been lots of heaven developed, because we're pushing snow everywhere there. There's just nowhere to keep and try to keep that pathway open, um, but we're storing snow in these locations, and Timberline doesn't offer that. Just the way driveways every, uh, thirty feet and working within those limits, it's, it's very difficult.
So, uh, a couple of comments on that. I mean, it's, it's clearly look at the traffic data that it is a, it is effectively an input collector. And maybe we should reflect, and when we do the changes, for example, the other transportation changes, that new change. Having said that, the standards that we currently have listed for, they're quite, aren't necessarily the right ones we should use in the future, especially if they don't work. So are there suggestions about ways a pathway could be included and still work and go?
Well, probably the most effective pathway I see here, um, is a curb and gutter sidewalk. Because we can clear that with a grader by just popping up there and pulling it right off, but we have to have a place to store the snow. It's not effective having curb and gutter if you're trying to store the snow on the backside, because then you can't get all the road snow up over the curb. But if, like, for example, right out here in Eggloft, we can go right along it, and then we take all the snow across the road, it's the most effective. When there's a separation, the grader can't get up there, and then putting a loader on a bike path just ends up wrecking it, because you have such a heavy piece of equipment with heavy chains. And so, like, for example, on the bike path out here next to Alieska, I try to run it with my truck as much as possible to limit the damage out there, but we get to a point where we need to take a loader on there. So, so the more the things are tied together and we can work with a grader, it's just a more effective aspect for everybody. The hardest part is, okay, you wipe all that snow off, where are you going to put it all in the end?
But this is obviously part of bigger discussion, but we have some time to look at this.
Yes.
And this, my second question was, um, one thing that confused me in the report is, it said that the, uh, the grade at Vale is too steep, but it wasn't clear that it was actually the reconstruction would fix that.
No, it would probably retain the same grade. I mean, we.
How, how typically what we're seeing is when you reconstruct a road, it has to meet the standard.
We would probably, uh, seek a variance on that, because I mean, Verbier is a perfect example, that's a twelve, twelve percent, uh, hill there. There's a variance applied to that.
Okay.
You know, because if we dig down a bit lower, then we risk the utilities of water and sewer by exposing them.
Thank you. Any more questions from board? Uh, Kyle, lastly, the traffic calming, will that still be something to make possible in option two or claiming it somewhere?
Yes, we would look at both options. Whatever we, whatever we would do here, we would put traffic calming in there. That would be sort of a, actually a, a deal killer if we couldn't do that.
Okay. Thank you again. See any other questions? So we'll go to, uh, number eleven, Assembly STR Registration Ordinance, Consider Resolution of Support for Amendments to AO twenty twenty-three, one ten. Mike?
The, I mean, some resolution I've excellent. So, um, we passed a resolution into last year about what principles the Girdwood STR regulation should have. And, um, there are a few things in the Assembly proposal that might kind of clash a little bit with what we think here in the future. So basically the meat of this, um, of this resolution is those last three bullet points. Um, but this would be seeking following changes, uh, to AO twenty twenty-three dot formal S. First thing is that, at least in this, in the, in the ordinance, whether it's the actual code language or somewhere else, um, it would direct the treasury to require the STR platforms to report by location. So when they, when taxes, when taxes are paid through tax, uh, most short term rentals, um, in the case of most short term rentals, it's collected by platform, so Airbnb or VRBO. They collect it, and then every quarter they send a check to the, uh, municipality. And at the moment, they just say, here's a bunch of money, take it. They don't say anything, there's no more detail about it. Um, it would be extremely useful to us, as we decided in our previous resolution, if we at least knew how much, um, tax revenue, how much room tax revenue was coming from Girdwood, and presumably the same is true for other areas as well. So requiring the STR platforms to report at least zip code level. The tax receipts gives a certified amount of money, we can, uh, we can sort of discuss and look at in the future. Um, platforms do it for other municipalities, they have to ask, and MOA hasn't. So that's the first request to change it, is to at least add in some language to require treasury. Um, the second thing is the S version versus the original version. Um, the language around conformance with land use code has changed and become much lighter. Um, in the S version, um, applicants are only required to kind of self certify and say, yes, it meets all the requirements, that's it. There was a, uh, there was actually some verification in the previous version. Or Girdwood in particular, uh, we know in the building service area, so, um, we already had land use permits. And secondarily, if we make any change in the future, they're almost certainly going to be through land use code. So a little bit, some strengthening on how conformance through land use is determined and, um, you know, whether it allows or changes the future in land use, if it's that's a process, that's something that should go in. And the third one is, um, about incentives. Um, there's something quite nice in the Assembly ordinance, um, which incentivizes long term rental of a unit, which is also used for short term rental. But it only incentivizes for that specific unit. So if you had, um, a situation where you have a, you know, a main house and an ADU, for example, um, you only get a reduced license fee if ADU is a short term rental, and then it's a long term rental for six months a year. And the same with the main house. What it doesn't do is, um, do anything to encourage year round rentals. Um, it actually gets in the way of that. It actually provides disincentive for, uh, year round long term rentals. Uh, so some tweaks to that language in that section would be helpful again to us, um, both in the future and I think now. That actually caused a problem to, to us in Girdwood, because it incentivizes part year, uh, long term rentals and the cost for year round long term rentals. So then basically the three, the three, uh, main changes. This presumes that, um, as it's currently structured, that this licensing scheme would apply to all of the municipalities. I personally don't see a way we can easily exclude ourselves, and I'm not sure it's a good thing if we did. Um, so this is presuming that the language and the structure stays as it is, but with these three modifications.
Mike, finding all this and all your work on it. Uh, questions, uh, for Mike or comments about the resolution? From the board? I only found two tiny typos. That's not my comment so far. Hey, everyone on the board has a chance. Yeah, Jennifer?
Uh, actually, I do have a question about the, the third point, um. I guess, I don't understand exactly what mechanism you're asking for here. Are you asking them to get rid of the thing they have incentivizing part time, long term rentals?
The, the, not quite. The, the way it currently works, you can keep, but, um, what it doesn't, so, let's, let's take an hypothetical example, where you have, um, an ADU and a main house, and obviously owned by the same person. As the, as this proposal is currently written, um, to get a reduced license fee for the ADU, it's a short term rental, you have to have someone, uh, living in the ADU, long term, either the owner living in their part year or, um, a long term renter for six months. What it doesn't allow is this kind of split situation, where you had, say, a main house and a short term rental, uh, sorry, a main house and an ADU, and someone is living full time in the ADU in the year. And then the main house is. This would not give the incentive, uh, circumstances. It would actually be best if you swapped, um, you know, if you, if you basically only had a six month lease in both places, rented them both at, at different times, or the same time. So it has one level of flexibility, has a level of flexibility missing, which could be in there. And by doing it this way, it actually encourages non, non year round leases. Um, so you can keep the, you can keep the language and everything in there now, but add this extra step, which enables, um, year round leases to work and still get the incentive.
Anything else from the board, or we go to public? I think this example makes sense, the way it's written, when I read the, the second part of it. Sent by a year round long term rental of other units on the same person.
So maybe a different way of, I'll translate it in a different way, this might be clearer. Uh, the way the ordinance is written by the Assembly's ordinance is written, it's done, only considers each unit separately. Um, the suggestion here is if you consider a parcel, so basically one property, one thing, so like one person, if you want to gain single premises, um, and allow flexibility about how you consider long term rental use to be beneficial. Then you gain the advantages of allowing year round leases. The current structure you cannot have, you can get the benefit.
Hey, Brett, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, yeah, thank you for that. Um, so, I have a few sort of thoughts on this. They're a bit disjointed, but, um, it's interesting asking for zip code detail in short term bed tax information for STR activity. But, um, you know, the questions, uh, further down the agenda, on the advice of GHGC to actually try to recover short term rental bed tax to the service area. But it's sort of i- interesting to consider another potential future to this, and that is to, within the S, proposed STR regulation, uh, to remember that as Girdwood, we want to differentiate ourselves. So whether we say it in Title twenty-one, Chapter nine, by describing the land use that is STR within the Girdwood Service Area, um, is going to be important, um, because the fact is that it was already stated, this, this has some disincentive to the goals of the service area. And that is to increase the number of long term rentals available in the valley. So I would imagine another path in the future that would allow the service area to levy additional fees for that activity under the licensing scheme that's proposed by the Assembly. So in one way, shape or form, be Title twenty-one, Chapter nine, designating a specific, uh, zoning description that describes the land use that is short term rentals, or something within the Title ten, uh, that would describe, uh, Girdwood as having, uh, a service area with additional registration fees. But one of those two mechanisms is going to be necessary in any short term rental regulation coming out of the municipality. So I would keep that in mind and heed, uh, the well thought advice of GHGC in your consideration of the comments, uh, back to the Assembly on their proposed STR regulation. So thanks for that consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mike? Clarify?
Yes. With the chair?
Yes.
So Brett, I'm trying to understand one of the things you said there. Are you suggesting that we should ask for, um, the flexibility to have different license fees in different parts of the municipality? That specific ask?
Well, um, absolutely, under the auspices of the service area, because this issue is central to the impacts of this activity. So without the ability to mitigate this type of economic activity, um, we will continue to suffer the impacts and the unintended consequences of that STR activity. So in the regulation, the mechanisms are, as guided by the GHGC resolution, the mechanisms are a Title twenty-one, Chapter nine, designation that we consider that land use activity throughout Girdwood, uh, to be designated and special. And/or Title ten adjustments to the proposed regulation that allow for these types of increased registration fees, because the outcome of our request for short term rental bed tax is not certain. And by only relying on, say, designating a, a zip code for short term rental bed tax as you proposed, it may fall short, because that bed tax may or may not be forthcoming from the municipality. So to hedge against that eventuality, I suggest that we employ suggestions or changes to this proposed regulation for an increased fee upon registration of STR activity for the service area.
Thank you. Clarify?
Yeah, that's all right.
I don't see any other hands up?
Well, I actually have a question about that. My understanding from listening to the STR work session about this and the Assembly is that they are envisioning this fee to just, just to cover administrative costs. And in fact, they kind of reiterated that, that if they ended up having a surplus, that they would actually decrease the fee. So they had originally talked about making this and using it for housing, potential workforce housing, yada, yada, but that seems to, that idea seems to have died. I'm wondering if it's because Gerdwood was like, well, hey. Then what percentage of that comes back to us? Just out of curiosity, right? So I'm, I'm curious about if this is the point at which to fight this battle. Like, I absolutely agree with Brett. We're going to have to look at this and particularly if we lose the battle and continue to lose the battle about getting some portion of our bed tax back. Then, uh, then we have to find other funding somewhere somehow. But is this, is, I guess my question is, is this the time to, to, to fight that battle? And I guess what Brett is asking for is the, the possibility, having the possibility of that be included in, at this.
That's my understanding as well. I think it's actually a more of, yeah, I, I understand what you mean about whether this is my time. You know, there's probably never the perfect times. Perhaps we should just, perhaps we should just make the case here that, you know, when for the full speed, not the reduced fee, which would apply to owner occupation and people leasing the property, et cetera. But for the full fee, there perhaps could be an additional amount to deal with the specific circumstance of good because we have such a high percentage of, of short-term rentals here. So that would be a, that would be a way it could be specified, not necessarily for Gerdwood itself, but for any, any locality that has a high, very high density. Above 15% of the housing units, for example.
So to clarify, we're asking about a fourth bullet.
That would be a fourth bullet. I think it's a fair thing to ask now. What do you agree?
Thank you for that discussion. I chime in just to say you could almost squeeze in on the third one, but it may get a little too complicated.
So can, can I make a little motion then? First of all, we we adopt this, we adopt the resolution.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution. Do we have a second? Seconded by Jennifer. Do we have discussion?
Well, now I'm going to go with admitting we had a fourth bullet point to request an additional license fee specifically to mitigate the impact of short-term rentals in areas with very high densities of short-term rentals.
Seconded. Okay, thank you. Motion seconded for the amendment. Any discussion on that?
Do you want to put a dollar figure on that?
Not yet. First, I want to press my inventory.
Could it, it, could it be the original fee they were suggesting without the discounts they were suggesting at the next?
Additional, you see on top of that. Top of the following would not apply to this. So at the moment, it's structured at $400 or 50, if you can get the, if you get the reduced rate owner occupation and other things gives you the reduced rate. This would be something like 600 or 800 instead of 400 or $50. So it wouldn't make any difference to, to people who already have the license discount. It would only be an increased license fee for those that do not.
Guy has his hand up.
Say, say you're a minute one more time.
Basically, the it would be an additional license, an additional fee, top of the license fee, a non-discounted license. Where in four areas to mitigate against the impact of short-term rentals in areas with high densities of short-term. Specify that, so we're clearly.
Say you admit a number to that.
We would have to put a number to it when it comes to actual code. We don't have to specify any.
So it would definitely, it'd be only a.
Probably at the moment, I can imagine a time where it might apply to downtown as well, South Edition or something. Because they're, they're definitely seeing an increasing number. Short-term rentals, but it's maybe like 80%.
If I understand the way we've worded this, it leaves it open for South Edition to make a similar argument.
Potential in the future.
Uh, Margaret?
So were you suggesting that this would say that that additional fee would be directed to any place or?
To mitigate the impact of short-term rentals in the areas of high density.
In the areas, okay.
So yes.
Yes. Zip code is a different issue. So the first, so just to clarify that, first bullet point about zip code is at the moment, there is no information at all coming from rental platforms about where that money is raised. So there's just a single dollar amount for how much the room tax comes from short-term rentals on VRPO over this period of time across the board.
But, sorry, one clarifying point about that, though. Because didn't I also hear this, the same work session that some municipalities have asked for that? So like, while that is correct, it is also true that they are providing that to the municipality and the government. So they, they're sitting on that information. We're not asking for some.
Probably the companies provide them. They provide a lot more. Quiet. It's just they weren't, they're in rent. So unless the, unless the municipality asks for it, get it.
Zip code alone doesn't leave the resolution for?
Zip code alone helps us.
Helps us. We're just like, hey, it's, it's not getting work. You're the only one that.
I mean, it'd help people, it'd help downtown, it'd help us itself. I mean, there's well, taking across, spell fee, something like that.
If we have that fourth bullet point, the way it's worded, and this goes to the Assembly very soon for their next discussion of this AOS version at a later date, when the code comes out with the price tax, bed tax number, then we can talk about the, talk to the Assembly members, right on understanding that part.
So there's, I think there's two slightly different discussions here. One is the whole issue of bed tax, which we're going to discuss later. But off to one side. The point of the first bullet point here is to help with future discussion. And now seems to be a good point to do that because the argument to this ordinance is it's about, they forget more. So let's make sure we get geographic information as well. The, the second point is we know, you know, one of our four principles, short-term reg, short-term rental regulation is that there should be funding for mitigation of the impacts of short-term rental. And the question, good question Brett asked earlier, is can we use this and just simply directly ask for money now from licensing? And that's effectively what the fourth bullet point is doing, saying, add an extra fee. Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of number of short-term rentals for people who do not qualify for the reduced fee and use that directly to mitigate. It doesn't preclude us getting, uh, rent tax in the future.
Any other comments or questions from the board, members of the public?
I have a question and suggestion. What does mitigation look like? And I don't know if you want to make that like specifically clear to the Assembly because it feels I've dealt with this a little bit with the Assembly that they taxed, you know, the alcohol industry said, we're going to mitigate this issue and then didn't necessarily do that for a couple of years. So I was wondering if you want to be clear about what that mitigation strategy is. And my suggestion would be to make that number really high. Like I would suggest a very high registration fee as a starting point. If you do something reasonable, they will do less. So I would suggest going high. Like in the thousands of dollars. That would be my advice.
Any other comments? Matt? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say in, in terms of the fourth bullet point, why don't we just simply say something to the extent that, that, to align with that, that Gerdwood may specifically need additional rules and or fees in addition to, you know, what's designated by the municipality to, to effectively deal with a short-term rental problem and, and effectively use, you know, Title 21 to, to solve that. So. And we're basi, we're basically telling the municipality that we would need to layer in more restrictions and fees, right? That we, we, we're asking for that, that ability to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Their thoughts from the board? Thinking about the word mitigate.
I think we, we definitely had discussions. I, I kind of like the idea of keeping it somewhat vague at this point because the exact method isn't clear. I don't want to tie our hands too much. We're, this is again a general principle that enables us to argue specifics.
There's no other comments? Uh, you could vote on the amendment first. Are there any objections to the amendment? Hearing none, the amendment is approved and to the main motion, resolution. Uh, any other comments? I'll ask for a roll call vote on the resolution. Kyle or Margaret for roll call on the resolution?
Senator Sullivan? Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Uh, that motion passes by.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, it was requested, we have a really quick recess for five minutes or, or three minutes. So it's 9:22. So by 9:26, we'll be starting. 25 or 26, because I don't know what seconds are on the clock.
Anyone else?
Nice.
Did you bring this? Will you?
Yeah, you're back live.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We are back recording and we'll go to number. All right, look at this here. The 12, GBSA Traffic Calming Study Update.
Yeah, so, uh, once again, we presented this, uh, last month and, um, this is basically, uh, we'll get to it here. We got the res, so GBS last year requested a traffic study be done on Mount Hood, Timberline and Alley Esca View at the request of neighbors and residents of those areas. And that study information came back and, um, for Timberline and Alley Esca View, we actually just did a one-day study on those. That's pretty standard with traffic departments. They do a one-day study. But at the request of the residents of Mount Hood, that actually was almost an eight-day study that happened there. So it actually really showed traffic patterns over a full week, which was very unique. Uh, but, um, uh, what we found was on the Mount Hood that we had a, uh, average traffic volume of about 381 vehicles a day. And then the average speed there being, uh, the 19 miles per hour in the 85th percentile. That's what they rate off of. And, uh, and the posted limit here there was 20. So the result of the study there didn't show a significant problem. There's definitely, when you look at the details, and this report gives the details, and I even have additional materials that show every hour for every day they, they studied. There's, there's definitely some one-offs where people are going fairly fast. But overall, the traffic for the most part was sticking within the speed limit. Uh, on Alley Esca View, um, we definitely saw uptick there with people going over the speed limit on that road, uh, with 519 trips on average a day. You know, with being a five miles per hour over. In order to qualify for traffic calming, uh, you need to be seven miles per hour over, I think, six miles per hour. So you could, you know, if we got to 27, then they would have considered, um, looking at Alley Esca View. Uh, but the real surprise was Timberline. And the traffic volume that goes through there, um, and it was, uh, you know, 2,500 trips, uh, across there. That was some of the most out of all the areas studied last year, um, for, for traffic. And, uh, the posted limit they have in here is 25, but that's wrong. It's actually 20 miles per hour and we corrected that with the traffic engineer. And so, uh, they saw, uh, over the limit average of 23 miles per hour. So it didn't get to what they would consider issue, but I think you combine those two together with the amount of traffic that goes through on our Groundhole Rule Road, um, Standard Road. There is quite a bit of action through that area and I think it, it could have a political warrant for improvement. And I use the word political warrant because that's what got us those flashing crosswalk lights out there. Uh, the traffic warrant didn't qualify for those crosswalk lights at High Tower in Igloph out here. But the political warrant, which means the board, um, politically pushed for that to happen. And I think the same could happen here. So we did make improvements on Timberline. We do have a good case to show that there is heavy traffic. Uh, and this is particularly in the middle of the summer when we see the most busy traffic. But even in the summer, I mean, it's just remarking yesterday, we were walking home of that road on a Saturday, on a Sunday afternoon. It's just a lot of people coming and going, you know, because it's just outpour of that, uh, that subdivision, uh, all comes down that road. And so, um, so yeah, it, it showed a lot there. So this study shows a lot of the results from the requests you had there. I just wanted to present this to you. It has no action requested, but it gives good information about what's going on throughout the municipality and within Gerdwood. Um, it has no action requested, but it gives good information about what's going on throughout the municipality and within Gerwood where their study was requested. So, yeah.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from anyone? Guy?
Can you remind me the the traffic calming methods, you know, speed bumps?
Radar signs, uh, narrowing traffic. So redesign the the roads so that you go down to, uh, smaller travel lanes, you know, like right now Timberline is pretty wide when it's graded shoulder to shoulder. Um, so you would, you know, that's one thing about repaving it, we'd bring it down to eleven or twelve-foot lanes. So it just brings traffic closer together. Um, so they don't tend to feel like they can really, you know, too close to each other in that aspect. And then, you know, it, I don't know what other ad methods they may use, but those are some of the more standard or more obvious ones you see out there.
We can use speed bumps, all right?
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's proven in town. There's neighborhoods are all over. I mean, there's the cut through on Baxter, which has several speed bumps over in those areas, you know, they work, you know. I talked to the greater operators about it, and they said, well, we just work it in, you know. One thing that's always challenging about Gerwood is that we'll get snow and then rain and then you'll create an isolator, but there'll be a hump of isolator in there. So those things would have to be taken into consideration. The only thing about Timberline is it is on arcing turns, so you would have to think about where you put those speed bumps in.
I guess my question, why is there such a? Why do you have to meet these criteria? I mean, can we just not decide to do it ourselves? I mean, is there some kind of?
Well, big thing that we have right now with speed bumps is emergency response. Fire departments don't like speed bumps because it really slows down their response time. And so they actually looked at new design methods for allowing for fire trucks to get through speed bumps faster.
So that's why I'm trying to calm things regularly.
That's exactly. And also the city is liable. So if we just go out and put speed bumps in, and then we do it wrong, and then the city is reliable for accident, you know, a lot of people have asked, can't we just put speed bumps on gravel roads? No way will they ever allow that, because there's no way to secure them and have them temporary and then pull them out. They're not going to fly up and damage somebody's car.
Thanks.
Mike?
Can you remind me when, uh, you said they were just for one day on Timberline? What day was that?
Uh, it was right in July. I think it was like July fourteenth and then, um, yeah, it was post Forest Fair, middle of July.
I think Zachy said it was a Wednesday.
It was a Wednesday, and so they tried to do it on a, an average day where it wasn't like or for a weekend or something like that.
But probably it would be higher on Friday or even Sunday.
Oh, for sure.
A rental.
Yeah, or just, you know, Sunday drivers going to the falls, you know, things like that, you know. But it was interesting to look at the Timberline, to the, look at the, and I can share this with you, you know, the whole stats for all of, uh, Lake Tahoe and Mount Hood. Um, you know, it was, uh, you could see the peaks at five coming out of the airport and, you know, and come during the day, and then on the weekends it actually slowed down because there wasn't so much worker traffic going back and forth to the airport. It was just tourist traffic going out there. So so it was interesting to see the ups and downs of it. And, you know, and going forward, it made up part of that political warrant is to say, okay, let's do a seven-day study on Timberline and get a good grasp on what it's like in the middle peak summer.
Unsurprisingly, I'd like to see the data.
Yeah, I could search it.
Kyle, maybe you stated this in the previous report. Does it register a walker or a biker or his dog?
No, it's all vehicle traffic. Yes.
Anything else from anyone?
You know, so we were able to instant instigate some of the proposals in the in the trails plan and be able to have some alternative routes for people to walk and bike. We could reduce the amount of traffic on Timberline.
Yep, for sure, specifically.
Where, um, having a plan, a trails plan that that takes into account alternative ways of getting around more community, um, that's where the trails plan, I guess.
Thank you.
I
Guy?
I should, I know it's way far off, but I just can't imagine paving that road and not creating a separate bike.
We can always go through the study. We could always go through and look at it and get a sense of what it's going to be like. I just need for you to start thinking about where we're going to put it snow.
Yeah, I get that. I get that. I just, I just.
You know, I mean, that's where Gerwood really needs to look at a snow dump, you know. We just start getting into more and more expensive proposals as we go forward. So, yeah, that's the, that's the crux of the problem for everything. And I come back to you, it's the bottom line. How do we afford all this stuff, you know? And so we have these ideas. And so it's just always trying, and we had great years there running with the state and getting all this money and, you know, going to the well, that that well is dry. And so now we're trying to be efficient with, without killing the taxpayers. So that's what I'm constantly thinking about. It's, it, yep, and it's impactful. You know, it'll be a blower going by blowing in a truck, and it'll take hours to get done with a section of street. So.
Thank you for that. Okay, we have a handful more items in our business. Let's go to thirteen. GHGC recommendation for GBOS resolution regarding the HLV parcel request. This person on the board.
This is, my understanding is this item is that, um, GHGC passed a resolution which requested, um, more than we asked for, requested a bunch of other things beyond what we asked for from, uh, with HLV. Um, and this is a opportunity to discuss that and sort of understand, we think we should do as a board.
Is it this? Margaret?
So I think that technically that specific item has at least been in part already handled with action earlier today. But the the larger issue has to do with the resolutions that GHGC has passed and what action GBOS is taking on those things. So the topic and the actual conversation may not be exactly the same. Unless you wanted to write a resolution about that parcel.
So this is a, um, so unlike all our other committees, GHGC is start as writing resolutions and requesting specific action, well, in some cases requesting specific action for GBOS. As opposed to providing advice. So this is a table of, I think, what's happened so far, what actions we've taken, just so we can understand the landscape.
Pass their hand up. I cannot see you.
This might move, this might bleed in a little bit to the next item.
Well, I I guess I'd like to just say, well, quickly, we have had resolutions come up from Landys, we've had requests things to be done from other committees. So I think that this is just, um, we're still in a period of adjustment and learning. And among other things, some of the things, one or two of the things they've asked for, I feel like we have in process, but it's not as sometimes a resolution that they pass doesn't then add into, add up to a resolution we pass. Right? Some of the things like we incorporated into our responses to the HLV work plan, for example, and that's up there. Or, uh, this bed tax thing, that's as as far as I'm concerned, kind of a work in progress. Uh, I don't know the way ready to write resolutions about that yet, or maybe we'll talk about it and we'll talk about it. But it's under, uh, we have that under new business, so it's not a thing to do tonight. So anyway, um, I view this as kind of a, let's stay on top of this and make sure that we have good communication back and forth between the two boards and, um, I view this as a work in progress right now, but maybe what we could do is revisit this in another month, or maybe we have another chart similar to so it's similar to the housing thing of like where we are, sorry, the development chart of like where we are with the things and we're GHGC, I I don't know, but I don't know. I don't know that I see an action on this right now. We've got a couple of members of GHGC online right now. Because like, is it? Do you have an actionable item out of this right now or based on what we just did with the, uh, parcel, uh, the, uh, I see Brett's hand is up, but just based on what we did just now with the, uh, RV parcel, like, are we good for now? Uh, and considering that other stuff is work in progress.
Well, thank you for this chart, Margaret.
Oh, that was Mike.
That's mine.
Mike, for this organization here. Uh, Jennifer, did you have a question then to ask Brett about this before item fourteen?
I'm asking generally, I think, because I thought Matt was online too, just to, if, like, are we missing something? Do we need, do we have an action item out of this at this point?
Brett, go ahead. Your hand is up.
Hey, thank you. Um, it was just my interpretation from reading about this agenda item. Your previous this is previous, uh, letter of endorsement for transfer of these HLV parcels, um, kind of met met the intent of the resolution that came out of GHGC. So I I just, uh, in looking at it, assumed that this item was sort of handled aside from the six, uh, the parcel six one three four, which was the, uh, RV parcel, which we already discussed. So um, I think the report back to the committee would be that this has been handled, at least in my, um, interpretation of it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Brett. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Okay, uh, Matt, is this critical to the number thirteen?
I mean, I I would just say that to the extent that that we kind of keep a, that the that the GBOS kind of has a running tab of the motions we we pass or the resolutions we pass. Um, as there's kind of the ebb and flow of, you know, what's going on in in, you know, with the assembly and stuff like that, that that, you know, something in this, in the table that Mike put together may become much more urgent. So there might might not be anything urgent as of now, but, you know, like with the land thing, all of a sudden, um, you know, we may pass a, a, a resolution or suggestions that that take on urgency. So I think it's just important to know for for GBOS, you know, what all the motions are that have been passed. And if there is something that we think is of immediate action, then GHGC, VHC needs to just kind of communicate that on to to GBOS that this needs to be a priority in the list of things. So that's how I view it.
Okay. Anything else on item thirteen? Good to have this.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, fourteen.
Sorry, just one last thing on thirteen. I think we'll keep, we'll keep, we'll keep something about this.
I agree, the visuals. Well, uh, fourteen, Gerwood Housing Economic Committee's structure, and under that is the consideration of appointment for member to GHGC. Mike, do you want to start?
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, is the, was the deadline last Friday or is the deadline next week?
No, the deadline was last Friday. We did have one person who applied, so, um, I did not include that person's resume in the packet because it seemed.
So my my feeling in general is that, um, we postponed the item on, um, reviewing committees. Um, I'm wondering if it might make sense to do this at the same time. I'm not sure that the model we follow with, um, with PSAC and, uh, GHGC is the right model going forwards of having a very closed committee. We don't do that without with LUC. We don't do that with trails. Um, and I know originally we did it with PSAC because we anticipated a much more, let's say, challenging environment perhaps, um, than it turned out to be, which I think is means that everything is working very successfully. Um, so I think we should look at whether we have, um, whether we continue with the types of committees that LUC and GT GTC are, which are basically a community, a community-wide committee with specific offices, uh, to, you know, to keep things moving in a positive direction. Or whether we go down the path we did with PSAC and we we just adopted that directly, uh, for for this, uh, body, it's a very closed body with very specific limits. And much more limited public interaction. But I think that discussion is falls within our earlier item, which is a broader one of how we, how we go ahead and review current committees.
You might, and rules and procedures when we, when we do, if, when we talk about that item next month or another meeting, uh, there's a section on committees, so you still in that printed version, it's not updated yet, so maybe it's updated, but having having a paragraph about GHGC needs to be in there and can kind of start with the template from the previous uh, from Landys, but obviously stating why it was started and what it's, sorry. Uh, Guy and Jennifer both had.
I had a question. Go ahead. Okay, my, my question though is I would like to see us at least right now still talk about, um, adding adding, we've got a vacancy there. So can we still do that? Uh, I mean, I would like to still fill the vacancy.
I think a motion can happen.
Right, okay.
Sorry. Um, no, I'm just kind of going back in time about when we first formed GHGC. Did we just model that off of a T T T H? Or did we, um, is that why we chose so many people right away? Do we? You know, did we just say, do we want to be stacked? You know, like really? I can't remember when we put it together, didn't, you know, did we just do it all the whole time?
We were very deliberate about it. Yes, yes, we did. We wanted a very particular, we wanted to make sure we had voice, certain voices represented at each committee, not like some random. Right, and then I don't, I don't want to get into this tonight, like, it's late, but I I would say that the way, I don't think it's fair to call it a closed committee, given the amount of almost everything they've worked on, they've brought to LUC. So they're including, they're really working very hard in the committee general community place in what they're doing. So I thought it's basically a team of experts slash representatives working to bring ideas to LUC and then LUC is giving thumbs up or thumbs down, and that's, that's very open. But I don't want to get into this right now. I want to know if we add somebody else to, if we're going to put off the discussion, let's put off the discussion, and let's add somebody to GHGC, because we've got a, we've got a, um, a resume in or a quest, and so fish on, I don't want the fish to go away. Uh, can we at least reel that in?
Do we have, do you have that person?
Well, no, I do know who it is, but anyway, um, can we talk about that tonight? Or not, um?
I think so.
Yes, yes. Like, I would make a motion that we, uh, consider appointing a member to GHGC tonight.
The person is Larry Daniels.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor. Oh, energy in a second for the purposes of discussion also. So do we have a second?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, thanks, Guy. Uh, normally for procedure though, do we? I know this is all business, but we didn't, none of us saw the resume. Small towns, we know who he is, as you said. But do we need to see that before we vote?
I think the question that really needs to be asked is, is this an individual who meets the bar that set for people who are participating on the committees?
Okay.
That committee in particular. I'll let you guys.
I have, uh, no problem making a decision this evening as this item has been, um, brought up a while ago since we kind of knew there was a vacancy until there was a formal vacancy and, uh, someone's willing and able to apply in our community. And sir, volunteer your time. So if there's no further discussion, I, um, guess the last part called question.
Sure.
And can you do a roll call vote?
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes. Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Um, I'm sorry, can I get clarification? Are we voting to vote someone in or voting specifically to vote Larry in?
To vote Larry in.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes.
Motion passes Pfizer.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for the clarification, Amanda. Uh, sorry to draw that one out. I have a face of stuttering.
So just to be formal about it, can we get, can I, I hope that we, uh, postpone the discussion about structure. about structure until the next meeting where we discuss structures.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone the structure discussion. Do you have a second? Any objections? Okay, that passes by a sent and we'll discuss that in lieu of number six. Next item, Public Safety Advisory Committee Structure. Ten minutes. Thanks, Amanda, go ahead.
Um, so we have been discussing the future of the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and it has been determined that it has served an amazing purpose. We have police contracted into their second contract, and the Public Safety Advisory Committee continues to do good work in outreach to the community. And I do believe that it might be time to kind of hibernate that committee and possibly move the outreach to a more community-led initiative and save staff time from having get going to and doing the minutes and the paperwork side, administrative side of having that committee still in place. Because the service area manager, Kyle, is able to kind of administer it, like the roads, take in complaints or concerns and address them. I think that the intent is to keep a committee or a GBOS representative to oversee PSCAC or the public safety or the cops, but, and that, and work with the service area manager to make sure that that is getting done. And I think that's all for now.
Thank you, Amanda. Kyle, I think you could speak to it, but the last meeting didn't have a quorum, but the people that were there, what were their statements?
They were in general support of hibernating the committee for now and working it through GBOS and then, you know, for the most part, continue to be the point person to deal with any sort of issues or complaints that arise on a daily basis. And as well, I've advised the committee and GBOS to the years when we've had issues, and then how we address and resolve them, keeping them briefed on any issues that we have along those lines. And we still would have chiefs from each area of fire and police reporting each month to GBOS and giving updates as they do. They basically get the same updates at both meetings. So it, it frees up their time, they run their organizations, and one less evening meeting for them each month. So, so our recommendation was to sunset the committee for now and, and continue to work with GBOS and the public safety supervisor as any issues arise.
Okay, comments from the board?
I have one, and that is that I like the idea of having a community-led group that does things that Tommy O'Malley has organized for years, like coffee with the police officers or cop, ice cream with police officers, and the community from young to old really probably benefits from that. So I would hope that still continues biannually or however often that is, even if there isn't, that many, because that person is the friends of, kind of. Any other comments from the board? I know some in the audience have their head up. Mike?
Just a quick one. So, yeah, the PSCAC, I was, I was actually on any of this work. So maybe it's a, maybe it's a terrible thing, GBOS. But it was, I think it's, I think it served its purpose. We expected to see, at, at the early days, I think we expected to see more contention and more, far more problems, issues. I think, you know, the, the adjustment from the troopers, the trooper model, which towards the end was a pretty rare trooper model, to having a, a much more established and frequent police force, I think was a, there were definitely lots of anticipated problems, and it's turned out not to be the case, which I think is a, you know, which is a very positive thing and says good things about both WPD and our community and PSCAC. And I think where there have been issues have been preempted and dealt with, especially in the early days. But again, I don't, I don't personally see the need for a committee of GBOS to launch anymore. I think we've, we've had success. We've gone from, we've changed the system into what we have now, and it's, it's pursuing, you know, in a way that can be managed in a more efficient way.
Any other comments from the board? Jennifer?
I, I just want to say, I, I appreciated the reports tonight. I noticed when I was on PSCAC, it was nice to get those reports. But I, I think I like having them, it, it's essentially brought to a broader community and especially if it reduces the number of meetings for Chief Weston and the police chief, that, that, that way we have, it prioritizes the report where there's more people.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that if we were to go this route, I would recommend that the representative from GBOS continue to be a road and public safety advisor, because those two are so linked. Our, one of our candidates for the PSCAC committee right now really came to the committee because of a road issue. One of our recent committee board members at PSCAC was brought to the committee because of a road issue. They're very linked, and I think that is a good thing to continue.
Thank you, Amanda. Noting the time, would anyone like to move to extend by 10 minutes?
To extend by 15 minutes.
Move to extend by 15. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Any objections?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tommy, your hand is up. Come closer to the microphone, please.
My name is Tommy O'Malley. I'm at Fox 598 Girdwood. I'm a member of the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and I would like to advance the notion that things are really good with our police because we have the Public Safety Advisory Committee. My son, I went to visit my son Gus in Minneapolis. He lives nine blocks from where George Floyd was killed. We saw in the Black Lives Matter movement and the riots that happened, moves to defund the police because they were being, acting inappropriately. Here, we had the opportunity, the Public Safety Advisory Committee had the opportunity, when we hired on the Whittier Police to be our police, to start them out by saying, this is the kind of policing that our community wants. Anchorage Police Department, their attitude was, oh, don't bother your pretty little heads about this. We know how to do policing. But with the Whittier Police and the Public Safety Advisory Committee, the community was telling our police, this is what we're looking for as far as police, policing in our community. We're not looking for, we're looking for police protection. We're not looking so much for law enforcement, but to look out for people that need their help. Domestic violence cases, things like that. Something, it's been said that the public outreach for the coffee and the cops and the kids and cops is important, but there are other things that the PSCAC does, like, it got money for crisis intervention training for our police officers and for our fire department. And what, when I went to the fire, to the police department, they were not aware that we weren't in the police service area, and all the alcohol tax money goes to, goes to the police, and we were left out of it. So it took action from the PSCAC committee to get our assembly members to get money from that tax to pay for that training. That training is due again. And another thing that the, that the Public Safety Advisory Committee does is we interface with, let's say, the clinic. When there was, when people were being roofied at bars, we worked with the clinic to get, to try and get fentanyl detection kits, narcin kits available for, at the Forest Fair time. So maybe people don't know that what the PSCAC committee is, that people from the community actually reached out for issues that were important to them, like the fellow with the roads. In some places, their calls to fund the police, it, I could draw a parallel to defunding the PSCAC committee. It's been very valuable for our community to have this standalone committee, that it's not just the police that are talking to the elective board, but people from the community that are intermediaries or liaison with the people in the, with the police and with GBOS. I really believe that the, our citizen committee set the tone for our police department. And, you know, I, nobody likes to go to meetings but to say, well, it's not really valuable, or it's, that served its purpose. Its purpose is ongoing. You guys went to those meetings where we had at the school, and how many people showed up for that? That was a PSCAC that put that together. And it set the tone, but the tone needs to be reminded. We need funding for crisis intervention. We need to keep doing the coffee with the cops thing. You know, we need to, to work with the clinic on their health and legal perspectives. There, there are signs in bathrooms in Girdwood, you are not alone, that, that are, are a public safety issue. And it's not, you know, not something that you guys answer the phone, but needle answers the phone. And that was something that was worked out through the PSCAC committee, you know, we did that. So if you're thinking of like, oh, let's save some money. I know it's boring to be at these meetings. They're getting stiff in my back, but I really think that it's not a matter of convenience or staff time. It's worth it. We have a good police department here because of how we've set up our relationship. And the relationship has been between the PSCAC committee, the community, and our police department. We advise the GBOS.
Thank you, Mr. Mallon.
Can I just get a question?
Yes.
I think, you know, your, your opinion that PSCAC needs that structure, that structure around it as opposed to, do you think it would just disappear if, if we tried to do like a police or a committee outside of this? Do, do, I mean, do you think it probably just disappears?
You've, let's say, if Mike Angington calls up the police department or any, and he says, I'm an elected official or I'm on a member of the GBOS, they listen to him? If somebody that's not associated with anything official calls the police department and says, hey, we need some of the tax money to pay for training for our officers, ain't going to happen. They listened to me last time because I was on the Public Safety Advisory Committee of the Girdwood Board Supervisor. It takes that to get bureaucratic action. Citizens and friends, we're friends of police, you know? No, doesn't work. Thank you.
Your comments?
Well, we have the second item as well, two, two candidates.
Right, same as last item. I didn't read it.
Yeah, in this case, I'm going to suggest we, we either make a decision tonight on both items or we again postpone it to the, to the discussion when we look at all. And I'm going to make a motion for the latter. So we do not, I'm going to make a motion that we don't, we don't appoint anyone to PSCAC tonight. We, we move the discussion about the structure of PSCAC to the, to the bigger discussion about structure of committees.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
Would you guys have any other discussion on this?
Does this function when they don't do anything for a while? They don't have, are they short numbers? They don't, can't have quorum?
According.
That would result, I think, in not having a quorum next meeting.
My recollection is that if there were two members, the quorum is made by the safety, by their supervisor. But we've got a quorum. That's my recognition, please.
I think we do, we can do it. We just haven't had a target time getting two members to show up.
Right.
So we told you about, we're going to have this discussion next month.
Yes, okay. Any objection to the motion that's on the floor? Okay, the motion passes. We have.
Just for clarification, oh, you want me to vote or no objection? Just for clarification, there's an expectation of GBOS that we have a public safety meeting in March. What do the, what does the chair, acting chairs of the PSCAC think? Do they intend to have a meeting? Well, the last time, the only chair we had there who indicated he was fine with sumsetting the committee.
Okay, so that sounds like if they, they're not going to have a meeting in March.
Right. Close, close that discussion for now. A few more minutes left. So update on the housing proposal.
So you said last time that we were forward, detailed implementation in March, such same state.
Thank you, Mike. Number seven, GBOS housing goals, which is in the packets.
So this is not meant for action, just to clarify, although it's on, I mean, it's under one flag they can, but this is meant to be the starting discussion. So this document, I can explain this really briefly. This document basically says, here are the, here are the housing goals or housing vision and goals from the draft comprehensive plan, which was, I don't think they can change it before, but that, that's basically on the work that was done about two years ago. And then the next section has the, further up, the next section has the municipal assembly housing goals, and then there's a suggested start, really, set of specific goals that would come from us, from GBOS, which don't have to match the others, it's just they're roughly, meant to be roughly, the hope is they're roughly in alignment, at least not against the, but the purpose of this is so we can, we can have some high-level goals, and when we discuss funding and actions, it's aligned with those goals.
Thank you, Mike.
The next page has the actual starting point for the goals. The other, oh, sorry, down to the lower part, that's it. Six there. The first four are definitely goals, the next two are arguably perhaps strategies, but I put them in the form of goal, so we can discuss this. The intention said is not to actually make any decision tonight, just to have this out. We can have a, a discussion here, discussion of GHEC, continue our discussion next month.
Thank you, Mike, for working on this. Any other comments or anything else from the board? This new item? Okay, so feel free to revisit it between now and the next meeting. Comments or suggestions? Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, this is something we may want to work session on, we may want to do something during GHEC, I'm not sure. This is the starting point.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business. Item 19. All right, moving on to new business item in nineteen. It's Girdwood specific STR regulations, discuss possibilities with GBSA powers. So the topic was Girdwood specific STR regulations.
Yeah, so, um, I know that there's a, there's been a proposal which has been put together by GHCC. There's a, there's another proposal for, um, a Girdwood specific STR regulations I put together. Both of them have been in the package for a couple of months. They're not that, they're similar, they're roughly aligned. Uh, the, the general idea is that, uh, use land use to, um, to put, uh, put some criteria and requirements around short-term rentals. There's some differences in detail, but that's the, the general idea is we actually specify what short-term rental is as a legal land use. And then use that in some regulatory. We could, I don't think we have time now. Couldn't we have four minutes left in the meeting, uh, to go into details now? But if you want to, we can extend the meeting, so. I think we just should have it on here so we can, um, we can start moving forward with, uh, actually proposing something concrete.
I agree with that last statement. Any comments from the board or thoughts on this item? Don't seem to need any.
I've got one more thing to add. Just the, the second part here is kind of important. Discuss possibilities, GBSA powers. Whenever there's been at least initial discussions about things special to Girdwood, typically the answer coming from the municipality is, you know, definitely, we don't have, um, we don't have the resources to do anything extra. Under proposition seven, we have the ability to do that extra things ourselves if we're capable. But we at least have the option of doing, of doing things that, that particular, uh, okay, this is now being removed.
You for that point. Okay, if I don't hear anything else, we'll go quickly to twenty. GHCC recommendation for GBOS request municipal bed tax compensation. Jennifer, do you have something for that one?
No, not at this time. Uh, I, what I would like to work on is, what I would like to work on with more with GHCC is uh, what we're hearing is kind of two concerns. One is, where are you putting the money exactly? We were asked at the HOC meeting, it was mostly about land, but also about money. Where are you putting it exactly? And, uh, I would like to have that answer more fleshed out before we make a specific. I don't feel like ready at this time to say, okay, that's what we're doing. I'd like to see this, um, I'd like to see this uh, again later.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna address this because I see Jennifer's name is there. I've done room tax in the past and I've done even deeper, but to see what the options are. There's a document, two, three-page document in here with some detail of the history, how we got to where we are, what the restrictions, what the high-level restrictions are, how the money can be used, and a couple of graphs. Um, actually, if you go down this graph, this graph is really interesting. This is the amount of money that's coming from room tax. In, according to municipal records, uh, from STR's program. It was sitting around a billion or so, uh, up until 2015. It's now sitting at six million. Uh, this gain, in fact, across room tax, there's been a significant increase in the amount of money coming in. It's now sitting at about forty, this year it's gonna be about forty-two, forty-three million. Um, it was sitting at eighteen to twenty until 2015. So there's been a significant increase in, um, overall amount of money coming in. It's been a huge increase in the amount coming from short-term rentals. Now, it used to be about ninety-eight percent of hotels and motels, now it's like eighty-five percent. Eighty-five percent is from, is from STRs. So there is an opportunity here. There are very complex areas. There are lots of restrictions that ties into bond issuing. But there it does appear to be some, some space here. It might take a little while to get there. And if you appear to be
Okay, thank you, everyone. It's ten fifteen. There isn't anything else. We are adjourned.
Yep.
Good night, everybody.
Yeah, it's everything.
Just like
Thank you.